Welcome, everyone. Why don't we read item 411?
Portland watershed report cards.
Mr. Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Earth Day again, everybody. We've had a lot of inspiring presentations today and we're pleased this afternoon to present something that's a sort of a, I would say it's a watershed for our bureau, but that would be, that would be like even a
That would be wrong.
...worst possible. But, but it is, it's a big deal what we're about to share with you, Mayor, and colleagues. And I want to introduce Mike Rosen and Jane Bicari, who are gonna walk us through it. And I have a few brief introductory remarks. Ten years ago, a city council adopted the Portland watershed management plan, which guides the city's approach to improving the health of our urban watersheds. An important part of the watershed plan is developing a simple way to clearly communicate the watershed's health. The Bureau of Environmental Services has been working on that method since probably around 2010.
Yes.
It's appropriate that today, on Earth Day, the Bureau is here to announce the release, later this spring, of Portland's first watershed report cards. This new tool will show at a glance current condition in our watersheds, will help track changes over time, and will help us plan the kinds of projects that have the most positive impact on watershed health. And I'm very pleased to introduce Jane, who will kick it off, and then Mike Rosen, who's done stellar work on this project. Jane?
Commissioner and panel members, I just need to warn you that we've heard a lot of complaints that the system of watershed reports cards is leading to teaching to the test, widespread cheating, and is damaging to the self-esteem of watershed. So please address those points.
We're not gonna count the first year's grades.
It's an inside joke. It is an inside joke. Good afternoon.
They know attention to that end of the panel.
I'm trying not to be distracted, okay?
Rule people out of order if this gets any worse.
Thank you, Commissioner Fish, and good afternoon, Mayor Hales and Commissioners. My name is Jane Bicari, and I'm the Watershed Services Group Manager for the Bureau of Environmental Services. We're very pleased to be here today on Earth Day with a briefing for you about the Portland watershed report cards, which, as Commissioner Fish explained, is a new tool that BES has developed to communicate about watershed health, about the health of our watersheds. Communities across the country are using similar tools to report to citizens and policymakers about the conditions of rivers, streams, and watersheds, and to track changes over time. Portland has made many investments in healthier watersheds, from land use planning to the combined sewer overflow program, restoration of the Johnson Creek flood plain, and thousands of Portlanders planting trees and building rain gardens in their yards. All these actions are adding up. Report cards are a way that we can sum up a lot of scientific data and share with everyone what the current conditions are now and where we have more work to do. Before I pass this off to Mike Rosen, I would like to acknowledge the efforts of many very talented and committed staff at BES who worked diligently to develop this tool, and I would like to thank them all, along with Mike.
Thank you, Jane. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm happy to be here today to talk about the Portland watershed report cards. And I just have to specifically call out four people. The last six months, we've had to navigate some rough communication and technical waters. And Sarah Culp, Jennifer Antak, Shanex Telle, and Chris Prescott have been incredible. And they got us here. And I just want to thank everyone who took the time to come out. They are all busy to come out and testify. So, we're rich with rivers and streams. We have 300 miles of rivers and streams in the city, and we have native salmon and steelhead in 127 miles. Each year, Portlanders come out to our watersheds to relax and play. Every year, we have hundreds of people that are coming out to the slough for events like the regatta and esplorando. And these areas also provide shelter and clean water and food for fish and wildlife. And this is a picture, it's a, it's a screenshot of a video from two salmon spawning in West Morland Park, and that's a direct result, I believe, of one of the restoration projects I'll talk about in a little while. So it's important to know that every year, each bureau in Portland conducts their work in ways that supports watershed health. So here's a little history, some of the key events along the way from the start of the implementation of the watershed plan till today, and then a little bit beyond. So the plan was accepted by council in 2005. In 2008, who's that calling? In 2008, we started the Greater Green Program. Then we developed watershed measures. A big effort went into developing a citywide monitoring program. 2013, we started stormwater system planning. And in 2014, we had our first four years of comprehensive citywide watershed data, which is our baseline. We're releasing the report card today. And then in 2018, we'll hit a milestone where we'll have a second four years of data, which will allow us to start looking at some preliminary trends. So we collect a lot of data, whether it's vegetative cover, impervious area, and then just a ton of individual samples. We have 21 measures for watershed health, and each year, we take 21, we collect 21 samples from 32 locations, and then over a course of four years, we have 128 sampling And so the challenge is, how do we communicate what this data means? And typically, we've presented really dense data in a very unsynthesized form, and the people that understand it are the scientists. And what we're trying to do is get to the top of this wedding cake and synthesize the data in a way that the public and decision-makers can understand it, reduce its density, so it has, so it's meaningful to them, and they can use it to make decisions. So it is sort of a complex process to get from the individual measurements to a letter grade, which is ultimately the report card. But basically, what we do is, we've done an analysis of the scientific literature, and we've determined a range of not properly functioning conditions to properly functioning conditions, but for an urban watershed. So we're acknowledging that we live in a system that's already impacted because we're in an urban environment. Then we use that information to transform the individual data points into a score from zero to 10, and then we convert that score into a letter grade from an F to A, and that gets us to the report card. And so why are we interested in producing this information in this format? We're really interested in giving Portlanders a bigger and better picture of our environmental health. As I said, we want to help to frame policy and budget questions. We have information now to show where we have good news and where we have persistent problems. We want to connect the work we're doing to those problems and outcomes that are moving in the right direction. We want to communicate better about our work. And the last point is, I think, one of the most important, we want people to understand how their actions are impacting environmental health and inspire them to continue to invest in watershed health. So what I thought we would, what we thought we would do is show you two separate report cards and highlight an area in the first one where we're doing well, and what an action is that supports that grade. And then we'll show an area where we have a challenge and what actions we're taking to improve that grade. So in Johnson Creek, maintaining healthy surface drainage is a big deal, and one way you do that is reducing the amount of impervious area you have in the system. And so this is a project that does just that. It's basically removing asphalt from a church parking lot, and it's allowing for natural drainage. And what we end up with is, through a small investment, and that's through our community watershed stewardship grant program, this community developed a project, the St. Mary Ethiopian Orthodox Church, and worked in partnership with two environmental organizations to pave, which helps Portlanders around the city remove pavement and reduce surface water runoff, and then the Johnson Creek Watershed Council. And so what do we get for that? We enhance the environment, the church ends up with a garden, it provides for educational opportunities in the community, and it strengthens the community because it's bringing groups together that might not traditionally work together. So then, we move to the slough, and I've highlighted our habitat score, which is a D.
Let's pause there for a second. No one can accuse BES of grade inflation and how they've structured this. You'll see throughout this report, a relentless effort to put honest rankings, even in areas where, you know, you might be tempted to say, gosh, can we somehow move that up a scale a little bit? But I think for this, for this to have an impact, the numbers and the grades have, have to be credible. And so I applaud the Bureau for the effort to do the tough job of aligning grades in all of these areas, including areas where the grades are not great.
And habitat is not just a challenge in the Columbia slough watershed, it's a challenge in all the watersheds in the city. But one of the opportunities that we have in the watershed program is to solve water management problems, surface water management problems, and achieve multiple objectives. And in this case, we have a large area in the slough with uncontrolled drainage to the slough. And we realize there was a large piece of property that we could use to control that surface water drainage by restoring a wetland. And so we work with our engineering group to basically engineer that large parcel of property into a wetland and to receive that surface water. And so what do we end up with? A really beautiful piece of property that has wetlands and channels to capture runoff. This covers 1,600 acres of streets. We deliver cleaner, colder water to the slough, where we remove invasives, we plant trees, and then we create a significant amount of habitat for native fish and wildlife. So here's some context for the report card, because it's a tool and it has limitations. So it's a conversation starter. We see it as a way for people to take a look at what's going on in the city and start to ask questions about what they can do about it. It's one tool, it's not perfect. It's not always gonna be the level of detail we need to make project decisions. And it's not just about the work of BES. It's about some things that we can't impact because we're downstream, or we have areas that we can't protect through code. As I said earlier, every day, the city bureaus have the opportunity and take the opportunity to do their work in a way that supports or improves watershed health. I mentioned that we, most of our watersheds are downstream. We control a part of the watershed. And so, for example, in Johnson Creek, we are the downstream end of a much larger watershed, and we basically control the last 20% of it. And it's about community-based action. It's about what individuals can do in terms of the way they live and how that impacts the watershed. And then it's not about quick changes, because it's taken a long time to get to this point. And so we're not gonna see recovery overnight. So what are we doing with other bureaus? This is just some examples. We've done a lot of work with climate change through the Climate Change Preparation Strategy, where we've shown how water systems that support watershed health can build resilience for climate change. We're doing work with, actually, I wanted to mention that we're doing that work, of course, with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. And some other work that we're doing in Southwest is we have uncontrolled drainage from our roads, the water is going into ditches, and it's carrying sediment from the ditches into our surface water streams in Southwest. But in partnership with Bureau of Transportation, we're able to put in vegetated swales and even create a paved surface that allows a little improvement, some improvement in safety for people that are along the shoulder of roads. And then finally, West Morland Park, the restoration of habitat there is something that we've worked a long time with parks on, it's been supported by the Corps of Engineers. It's resulted in a lot of people coming to the park, and a lot of people seeing things that they haven't seen before, like spawning salmon. And I, it's, I live in that area, and it's really a great source of pride for the community. Okay, so watershed health over time. One thing to keep in mind, as we start back at the beginning of the industrialization of Portland, watershed health is in static. And as the population increases, and particularly population density, we see an impact on watershed health. And so this is a qualitative look at this, and some of the points in history between 1851 and now that have impacted watershed health. Of course, the first sewers we constructed, as the population grew, discharged untreated water into the Willamette and other surface water systems. And it wasn't really until the 40s that we started to correct those problems with treatment We had the Federal Pollution Control Act, which required treatment, Clean Water Act, which required secondary treatment, and then the Endangered Species Act, so we start to see some recovery. We improve our sewer systems, we take care of our CSO problems, we begin to develop investments in watershed health, we adopt regulations for managing stormwater discharge, we invest in watershed health in a big way through the Greater Green Initiatives in, you know, the mid-2000s, we complete the CSO program. And so the question now is, as the downward pressure continues on watershed health, what will our investment be over time? Will that arrow stay flat, which, you know, no change, certainly avoiding a downward change is significant, because, as I said, there's a lot of downward pressure on watershed health. But another question is, through investment, how fast and how much are we willing to invest to recover watershed health?
Mike, keep this slide up for a sec, because, Mayor, if we're given award every year for a slide from a PowerPoint that is best in class, I would, I would nominate this slide.
Yeah, that's really great.
You think about it, this is like the entire history of the system in one slide, with all the information you need correlated to population growth, and then it ends with, you know, the question mark. But it's with all the milestones, and it's, it's really quite extraordinary. And then to see, to be able to track, you know, the tangible, positive benefits of the CSO program and Greater Green and everything that contributed to the upward tick to the point where we are now, where we have to make some decisions which will impact the next generation. I just, I think this slide is spectacular.
I like it, too, and it was created by people that are much more creative and smarter than I am, but it really, it's a fun slide. I like the way, you know, you kind of get this roller coaster effect.
I'm getting dizzy, please don't do it.
Sorry, I'll go on to the next one. So this is a communication tool, and one of the major elements of the tool is creating a web presentation that explains what the grades mean. So what is, what are the measures that contribute to water quality health, or habitat, or fish and wildlife? What are the actions that you can take to support them? What are the actions that the Bureau of Environmental Services and other bureaus are taking? So there was a great deal of investment and time and thinking in a way to present this information in an engaging way that would be interactive. And so we're continuing to work on this. The website will be completed on May 1. But again, it's really about engaging Portlanders in what watershed health means and what the city's doing to protect and improve it. And if there are any questions, we can take them now, or we can move to the panel.
So, Mayor, we have two panels to follow, but happy to take some initial questions.
Initial questions? All right, let's move. That's great, good work.
Thank you very much. So we have two powerhouse panels that we're gonna hear from today, and with the first four people, please come forward. Sally Edmonds, Supervising Planner, Bureau of Planning and Sustainability; Judy Bluehorse-Skelton, Senior Instructor to Indigenous Nation Study, Portland State University; Mike Houck, Executive Director, Urban Green Spaces Institute; and Dr. James F. Pankow, Member of the National Academy of Engineering, Professor of Chemistry and Civil and Environmental Engineering, the Portland State University. Welcome. And Sally, would you like to kick us off?
Certainly. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and Environmental Services work closely together on policies and plans related to improving watershed health and making Portland more livable. These plans include the recently adopted West Quadrant Plan, the Climate Change Preparation Strategy, and several plans that are in progress, which include the Comprehensive Plan, the Central City Plan, and the Climate Action Plan. So these plans are informed by scientific studies and technical works completed by the city over time, such as the Portland Watershed Management Plan and the Natural Resource Inventory. They call for increasing our use of green infrastructure to manage stormwater, restoring flood plains, protecting natural areas, and increasing tree canopy. But this watershed health report card and the data underneath it will allow us to take this planning to the next level, because we'll be able to, for the first time, actually quantify changes in watershed conditions. And this information will help us understand the long-term impact of our policies and implementing tools, help us to prioritize actions that are tied to specific metrics, and help us communicate important scientific information to the public during our planning processes. This work connects directly to the 2012 Portland Plan, which includes 12 measures of success, including healthy watersheds, complete neighborhoods, job growth, and equity inclusion. And so this report card includes all three of the components that make up the healthy watershed measure. And now, those are tree canopy, water quality, and effective impervious area. So it's great timing to have this work available now as a baseline to monitor the new Comprehensive Plan, Climate Action Plan, and Central City Plan. And many thanks to BES for developing this useful tool. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Judy, welcome.
Thank you. Tots, may we, good day. Thanks for having us here. It's really exciting to look at the measurements that the index helps to show the health of the watershed. Being at PSU, there's a whole generation who doesn't believe me when I say, "We never used to pack water in. We would be camping, or traveling, or meeting with family, and we drank out of the streams." They often question if that's really true. And we can ask, and I love that one slide, too, Commissioner Fish, where we track from 1851 to today, and what was lost, and what the challenges are for the city. And I notice behind, I'm reminded, those two rivers really impact and are wrapped around our leadership. How do we reclaim that health we once, we once had? We have grad students down at PSU who are trying to put a dollar amount in calculating on what it means to be able to drink water again, to be able to have a healthy, when we look at watershed health, it's public health. And so I'm excited to see the good efforts in measuring water quality at a time when many communities are saying, "We wish we would have done something like this." I have a lot of students coming up from California telling stories of their communities closing, no water, people praying for water, for rain, wish they had managed things differently, not having a long-term perspective. And so I really appreciate it. It was actually the incredible intern, thanks to the work of Jennifer Devlin and BES, who has been placed in PSU's Indigenous Nation Studies Program, who's enlightening many of us on some of the issues, which, how do we reach out to a, not just a younger generation who says, "Will we have water? What would that look like?" Water has more than recreation, or more than entertainment, but taking water back to life. Water is life. And they're worried about whether they'll have life, looking to their neighbors to the south. Also, looking at the equity issue, as communities come here from countries in drought, countries in war, countries where their way of life is no longer sustainable. So as this model, and I'm looking forward to seeing that taken to IRCO and other communities of color, refugee, immigrant communities, I think we're gonna get some interesting and resonance on the value of water as critical to life. And I ask us, what would it take for us to all pack up children, grandparents, with what we can carry on our back, and try and get on a boat and go somewhere else where there's water again? Or there's the kind of environment that supports life? And so these are some of the communities that are coming to Portland, and as we prepare for climate change, and we prepare for the growth that Mike showed, Mike really helped me understand that the big challenge and the primary message I can see coming from this report is a narrative, is that we have 150 years of healing and fixing bad, past bad practices, whether we look at Willamette Falls, all the people that loved that eel that the Grand Ron served at the West Morland Salmon Celebration, they were like, "Where are you guys getting this? How can we get more?" And we said, "Well, normally, Willamette Falls." So how do we keep that food system at the same time as we heal the past and prepare for more people to come? So it's an exciting report card. I'm looking forward to more. I really am excited, and I ask our leadership to change the message or inspire people to no longer look at water as just a utility that should be cheap, but that it is sacred, and it is life. And if anything, we're probably going to be devoting more of our time, energy, and dollars to keeping it healthy. So thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Hales and Commissioners, I'm actually here today to represent the Intertwined Alliance, which is 140 partners across the region that are working to expand and protect parks, trails, natural areas, and watershed health and ecosystem health throughout the region. Two of our most significant partners, of course, are the Bureau of Environmental Services and Portland Parks and Recreation, and I want to be sure to thank them for their leadership in creating, helping create the Intertwined Alliance, and support it, and of course, making the huge contributions such as today with regard to moving the, moving the dial on improving watershed health. Mike Rosen didn't show one thing on the timeline, and that was in 2016. was in 2012, the Intertwine Alliance produced Regional Conservation Strategy and Biodiversity Guide for the Portland-Vancouver Metropolitan Region. I gave you an executive summary of that report. In the report, one of the biggest gaps that we've acknowledged in the region is, which are impediments to improvement of watershed health, is the lack of research and long-term data collection. The Watershed Scorecard Project is another significant contribution the city has made to the region's knowledge of the status of watershed and ecosystem health. And I'm here today again to congratulate the city and BES in particular for having created this scorecard. Frankly, I've really not participated in Earth Day over the last 10 or 15 years. I haven't been a big, huge fan of Earth Day because one of my observations is people tend to come together for a day and then they go home. I'm much more interested in the folks that are working day in and day out. And the Bureau of Environmental Services, other city bureaus, you all really have made a commitment to protecting and improving watershed health over time. The scorecard is a very important tool in that it's not enough to do the work. We really do have to be able to demonstrate to the public that their dollars are being spent in a way that actually has results. That said, you won't be surprised to hear that I do have some suggestions on how to possibly improve the scorecard, at least how you utilize it and how it's utilized by the, by the community. I would like to start out, there's been a little tension recently with regard to how clean is the Willamette River. The Willamette River frankly is clean enough for people to jump into and do the big float. But the message that I'm concerned about is the Willamette River is not clean yet. And this scorecard allows us to talk about the good, the bad, and the ugly, and where we need to put more resources. I was incredibly disappointed that the Greater Portland Pulse removed all natural resource values from, from the regional scorecard. I think this scorecard gives us an opportunity maybe go back to the Greater Portland Pulse and reinsert natural resource issues into that regional scorecard. The scorecard's going to go active on the website on May 1. I would really hope that the staff could work with the Intertwine Alliance to ensure that is at least linked to the Intertwine Alliance website so that it gets broader distribution throughout the region. This is a huge concern for me. I got involved in the Columbia Slough, trying to improve the Columbia Slough 30-some years ago. And I will tell you, it took many, many years to convince elected officials, to convince policymakers that the Columbia Slough was worth investing in. And it got an F, all right? And I applaud Commissioner Fish's notion that you don't skew the results just simply to make people feel better. However, I would suggest, just as if you had a kid who was homeless, came from an abused home, whatever, all these horrible impacts on them prior to going to school, that you would take into consideration the past experiences of that individual. The Columbia Slough received an F for habitat. I would say that that F goes to the city of Portland. We need to be honest about what we've done to the Columbia Slough in the last 80 to 100 years. And so I just, I'm thinking of grading on a curve to get, to get to Commissioner Novick's comment or whatever. What I hope does not happen is that A, the people who've worked so hard, the Linda Robinsons of the world and so forth, don't, are not dispirited by this scoring. So somehow we need to be able to convey that, no, it may have an F now, but it's actually much better than it was 20 years ago, and we're going to continue to work to get to D, C, and B status. The final thing is on page 18, the trajectories that Mike noted. The trajectories are all upward or at worst level. This city is going to have how many more people moving to it? We're densifying, development's going to intensify. I don't think it's realistic not to have a downward arrow with that question mark. And obviously, that points out to what are we going to invest to while we're developing, while we're building out, what do we need to do to ensure that those scores keep going up? Those are, those are just a few thoughts I had based on the scorecard itself. Anyway, congratulations. It's a fabulous project. It's going to be great for the region, I think, and great for the city of Portland. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mike, Dr. Pankow, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Fish, Mayor Hales, and other commissioners. My name is James Pankow. I'm a professor of chemistry and environmental engineering at Portland State. And I guess that's one of the reasons why I'm here, because I actively give grades. And I've given, given some As and I've given a few Ds and Fs. And I know it's a sensitive issue and people don't like to get Ds and Fs. Yet it's an important and succinct measuring tool in order to get the communication across as to performance. So what I teach at Portland State is environmental chemistry and basically how chemical and biological indicator information can be synthesized as an important process in assessing health of environmental systems. I teach a wide range of students. And these students I get are engineers. They don't have a lot of chemistry backgrounds, so it takes some communication. Some of them are biologists, so they need communication on the chemistry side. So it's very important to be able to communicate things on a level that Earth can be understood by the people you're communicating with. So that's, that's an important issue with training, even professionals. So given the significant environmental challenges we face, including climate change, it's obviously critical to find better and effective ways to help the public, policymakers, elected officials understand complicated environmental data. And of course, there's a lot of grade information and tests and participation homeworks and all that has to be synthesized. And that, that works effectively in the classroom environment. So the challenges are only going to grow. So right now, we've recently passed 7.3 billion people in the world. And I'll give you, when I teach environmental chemistry, one number I teach, that I communicate with, they remember one number for my classes, it's often I mention the number 211,000. That's the number of people added to the population per day. So that's a Portland every three days. It's a mega-city of 10 million every 50 days. And we're slated to cross 8 billion in 2015. So this, this whole problem isn't going to get any easier. We have to come to grips with it now. And, and it's not just about Portland. What Portland does is important for Portland. But unless what Portland does is communicated to other places, it's not going to matter. Portland will be irrelevant if the rest of the world doesn't follow the kind of example that Portland sets. So while the record port card process is necessarily a complicated synthetic distillation process, it does a good job of distilling down information into a package that can be understood by the public. These kinds of things have been used before for air quality. There's different air quality indices for status of air quality based on PM levels and ozone. It's frequently used by the public to understand whether air is safe to breathe in environments. And there's different, different indexes. They do different scoring algorithms, but they basically, they come out the same way and relied on reliably by the public. So regarding grade inflation and just expanding a little bit on Mike's comments, it's, if there is an F, the public needs to know why, what an F means. So and why they should care about whether or not it's an F. So some students I have don't care if they get an F. So it's part of the communication process of these, the report card scale is to, is it make it clear to the public what, what the poor grades mean. Because once I think that communication takes place, it's much easier to find consensus. Lastly, I think it's, it's a two-way street. Public is interested in knowing status of, of the environment and if they can be encouraged to participate by understanding better what's going on, that's a good thing. And then by the same token, that'll reinforce motivation on the part of people like BES and researchers at Portland State such as myself to do a better job of finding the right measures and then communicating them in a way that is useful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor. And I will note in the handout that Mike gave us, my favorite section is entitled, "Green Infrastructure: Efficient, Cost-Effective, and Meets Many Objectives." I would say that's pretty good communication about the many benefits of green infrastructure. And to your point about an F, and I think Mike Rosen mentioned that part of our goal is to inspire people. So if we give some, if we give something an F and people feel crappy about the work they've done, that doesn't inspire them. So that's, that's a tension and we'll take your, your testimony and comments to heart. Thank you all very much. We have one more panel, Mayor. Faduma Ali, Community Organizer and Director of Portland Harbor Community Coalition, Groundwork Portland. Bob Salinger, Conservation Director of Portland Audubon. And Mary Ann Fitzgerald, Past President, Southwest Neighbors, Inc., which as you all know is the umbrella organization that represents three members of council, all residents of Southwest Portland.
Commissioner, I apologize for being late. Was there a handout at the beginning or a copy of the report? We're kind of short-staffed in my office this week and I don't have the actual report.
It was the PowerPoint.
Do I have, I don't have that.
Yeah, I didn't get that either. So I saw his slides, but I didn't get a copy of them. Good to have later.
Pass that down.
Okay.
Faduma, welcome.
Good afternoon. Commissioner, my name is Faduma. I'm with Groundwork Portland, a nonprofit organization that brings about sustainable, community-led improvement of the physical environment in low-income areas while advancing environmental and social justice. We have a couple programs that we're working on. The Portland Harbor Community Coalition is one of them, brownfield program, as well as our Green Team. The Portland Harbor Community Coalition ensures that the cleanup process of the Willamette River has an equitable outcome for all communities, including environmental justice communities who are disproportionately impacted by the Portland Harbor contaminants, as well as the brownfield program, which builds awareness for and educates community members as to why brownfield redevelopment is important to economic development, land use, and growth strategies. We also have our Green Team. Green Team is the new generation of change and the folks that are going to be living after, to help build the environmental movement that we need in our city today. And what we are very much interested is how do we communicate the information that the BES, as well as the city, has about environmental issues to communities that are oftentimes not at the table? And how should we do that is currently a question that we're asking many communities and developing strategies to make sure that folks understand that they can be part of the solution in anything they identify through the watershed report, in which we find it to be a very helpful tool to create it, that can help communities establish an understanding of what's going on within their neighborhoods and also be part of the movement of change. And so after reviewing the report cards, there are a couple of suggestions, important equity and environmental justice that we kind of explored, which is economic benefits of watershed restoration needs to be elevated, environmental-based employment and the opportunity to scale career tracks in huge far region as a large as farming. Also, using the report card to track employment and workforce opportunities. Community feedback loop is also very important ways to guide people through the actions in response to the grades that is given, the specific areas, what action that those sites can be taken after, if it's graded F or if it's graded D, what does that mean for community involvement, as well as youth engagement for habitat restoration and related career experience and engagement, and making sure that information is also translated. Other materials is translated in top five primary language that's spoken in the city. So these are some of the hopeful information that we're hoping to gain from the watershed report and also engage in communities in the process. We find that community engagement to be one of those things that we would like to make sure that we do in all of the aspect of work that we do at Groundwork Portland, as well as just motivating people to take action within their neighborhood. Because at the end of the day, a chair cannot stand on its own. There's four parts to it, and community work and community involvement is what we see as being an important key priorities in our state. So thank you all.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and members of the city council. My name is Bob Salinger. I'm the Conservation Director for the Audubon Society of Portland. It's good to be before you again today. First of all, I want to congratulate Mike and Bureau of Environmental Services for the work on this. I think they did an outstanding job. And, you know, I think it's an impressive product that will actually help translate some very complicated issues into something that will be much more accessible to the public and also provide a better roadmap of why we're doing what we're doing and where we're trying to go to. I think the fundamental message that we can take away from this is that what we're doing is making a difference. I mean, that chart really does show that these major initiatives that we've taken on have moved the needle in a significant way and that we're on the upswing. It also tells us that we have a long way to go and that in some areas, we have a very, very long way to go. And I think particularly of habitat and biodiversity, which rank very, very low across the board still. We have some big challenges. We're making progress. We're doing good work, but we have challenges before us. So a couple of things I just wanted to highlight in terms of thoughts about this report. One is taking advantage of stakeholders and partners and really connecting back out into the community. One thing we have seen in the last few years at BES is a little less public involvement in developing these kinds of things. I think BES historically has been one of the most interactive bureaus in the city. We've gotten away from that a little bit, and this report does reflect that. I think they did a great job, but to some degree, it's come from the inside. And I think it would benefit from having a stakeholder committee. I think a lot of BES's work has benefited. A lot of these big initiatives were successful because stakeholders were very deeply engaged with them, bought into them, and owned them along with the city. I think, I think this kind of work also needs that. It helps inform how the report rolls out, helps spread the word more quickly because your stakeholders are part of the process. And also, I think ground truths, different aspects of it. There are different pieces of this that we would love to weigh in on a little more deeply at some point and say, you know, did you think about this in this way or perhaps this in a different way? It might be more effective. But again, overall, I think it's a very good product and we're very supportive of it. Secondly, we need to think about what the next generation of big initiatives is. You can really see those milestones where, where we came together and developed a big initiative that was a five- or 10-year effort and how that changed things. Right now, we don't have that in front of us and we need to develop that. We need to develop the next generation of what are the big things that we want to do going forward. And this report is a great launching platform for that. You know, it tells us where we really need to focus. And it also allows us, I think, for the first time to start to say, and if we do X, Y, and Z, we can go from a C to a B. And our goal is to get to a B by, say, 2018. We can really start to hold ourselves accountable in a way that we haven't been able to do historically. So that's very exciting. I think we need to look at the low grades and every time we do a community plan or a district plan, really focus in tightly on those. It gives us the opportunity to be much more specific in terms of what we want to accomplish in different geographies and almost work backwards from if we want to get to a B, what do we need to do in this district plan to actually get there. I want to emphasize partnerships. I think BES has been so successful because it's been one of the most effective bureaus in the city of developing really, really strong partnerships, whether it's with groups like Audubon or Friends of Trees or DPave. So what pieces of this report can we look at and say, you know, we should be investing more in DPave or Friends of Trees or some new group to really get this work done perhaps more cheaply, more efficiently in partnership with the city? So those partnerships are critically important going forward. And the last thing I would say is, it would be to echo Mike, which is the arrows all do go up, but it is possible to go down. And we have some difficult decisions in front of us, some really big decisions in front of us, that really could actually tip that needle down in a downward direction. You know, it doesn't have to be all up. It's not necessarily going to be all up. And I think we need to think very carefully about some of these big decisions that could start us down on a downward trajectory again, that could be hard to recover from with the population increases that we're going to see going forward. So I guess I'll just leave you with, you know, I hope, I hope the next step after this report really is to bring in stakeholders, as Faduma has talked about, a more diverse group of stakeholders than we've probably had historically. But bring them in and let's figure out what that next big set of initiatives is going forward. Thank you very much. Mary Ann, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Fitzgerald, Past President of Sweeney. And we are one of those partners with BES. And thank BES very much for the funding that enables our Southwest Watershed Resource Center to do the good work that it does. As a little side note, some of you may know that I worked for the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality for 31 years. And there are many people like me with a passion for protecting and improving the environment throughout Southwest Portland. And as a little trivia, 1938, it was an initiative petition by the citizens of Portland that funded the first sewage treatment plant. So it took the citizens to take action to get the elected officials to fund these water quality improvements that we've seen over time. And I'd like to suggest that perhaps the next initiative could be continued partnerships with PBOT and the Bureau of Environmental Services to better manage stormwater along our streets in Southwest Portland. It's a huge issue. It's very evident in the report card that I've seen. And I think It's very evident in the report card that I've seen and I think we've invested in the underground injection, the East Multnomah County, the Big Pipe, and so Southwest's turn is next. So, back to my pre-written comments. In Southwest Portland, we have poorly drained soils, steep slopes, sensitive natural resource areas, and we need context-sensitive solutions to water quality issues in the watersheds. The work of the Southwest Watershed Resource Center helps Southwest Portland improve water quality and is integral to helping the bureau meet its stormwater MS4 permit obligations. Since its establishment over 15 years ago, our one staff at the Watershed Resource Center has helped to provide residents with technical information and referrals for invasive plant removal, native plant landscaping, stormwater management, natural gardening, and other practices that enhance the health of local watersheds. Our staff support 14 volunteer watershed stewardship groups in Phantom Creek, Triang Creek, Stevens Creek, and other Willamette subwatersheds within Southwest Portland. We partner with public and private schools, communities of faith, the African Youth and Community Organization, and other community partners, and leverage with other partners like the West Multnomah Soil and Water Conservation Districts, the State Parks and Rec Department, Metro, and others to secure grant funding and develop cost-effective watershed restoration projects, including projects on private property, which is essential and complements the work that the bureau does on public property throughout Portland. Our residents are motivated to join BES in restoring the watersheds because it has a tangible effect on our community health and livability. Sweeney's Watershed Resource Center has leveraged almost $200,000 in the past three years to remove invasive species, plant natives, manage stormwater, and improve riparian areas, which we believe will contribute to more green scores on the report card. But as several of you noted today, the volunteers need to see the results of their efforts in order to continue the momentum of their volunteer efforts. And last year, when I was looking through the bureau's website for water quality data and trends, I found it buried within technical reports to DEQ and virtually impossible for the lay reader to interpret. I mean, I knew enough about the data to find it, but it took me a long time. So we're very happy to see this data become much more accessible and to have it color-coded so people that are not so into the data can see it at a very simplified level. And we also hope that we'll be able to drill down so that the geeks like me will be able to access the data at individual locations and do some of that cause and effect analysis like Bob described so that we can try to target our efforts and our grant applications to where we think it will be more useful. So with that, I think I have celebrated Earth Day. I've organized events for Earth Day and I just want to say that I'm really pleased to be talking to you about this new index today as a step forward in helping us and our community prioritize resources and channel volunteer resources to protect our watersheds. Thanks.
Questions from the --
Thank you all. Mary Ann, I just wanted to say that as you know, Commissioner Fish and I are both keenly aware of the need to look for innovative solutions on stormwater management, partly because if we can't find that, then the cost of putting in new transportation infrastructure is prohibitive. So it's really good to have people like you and Al Iverson in Southwest ready to collaborate with the bureaus and figure out new approaches.
Yes, we're very happy.
Thank you all very much. Folks, who want to come back for a sec? Mike and Jane? That concludes our formal presentation. Carla, do we have people who've signed up?
I do not.
Anyone want to speak on this item in addition to the team we've heard from?
Any additional questions for the authors of the report?
I have a very technical question and that's on page 14 of the PowerPoint for the scoring for the Columbia Slough. It says that the macroinvertebrate score is not applicable. Why wouldn't we be -- why don't we have a number for macroinvertebrates in the slough? We have somebody in the back who knows the answer.
Jennifer's going to answer.
We knew that question was coming.
Tell us what a macroinvertebrate is.
A bug. It's a big bug. No, bug.
For the benefit of Commissioner Novick, would you explain what the macroinvertebrate is?
Macroinvertebrates are basically insects that live in the water column in the substrate of streams. So our index for macroinvertebrates was created really for streams that have riffles and pools, your typical stream system. And as we know, the Columbia Slough is a very unique system where it's slow water and has a lot of sediment in it. So the scoring that we have for macroinvertebrates just doesn't really apply to that system. So if we were to use it, it would bring the score artificially low.
That's different kinds of bugs there.
It has different kinds of bugs. Thank you very much.
And if you could get me later the scorecards for the other three watersheds, I'm really interested to see.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too.
Yeah, we will.
So Mayor, we just moved the report.
Okay, second?
Second.
Then let's take a roll call.
Fish? I really want to thank Mike and Jane and the team for all their hard work, not just the many years of preparing the index, the many months of preparing the PowerPoint and bringing this home. This is a significant milestone for our bureau. And while I think the general consensus of the people testified today is that this is a very positive thing, I also heard some constructive feedback about ways we can make this data more accessible, how we can engage our partners in a more dynamic way, how geeks like Mary Ann can drill down and get the additional data to do their own analysis, how we can make it as interactive as possible so that we're in a conversation with the community and updating our information. I think even a cautionary note from the good professor that sometimes an F is just so inherently discouraging, we have to think about whether that's the appropriate message. But the big picture, and I go back to that slide, that slide that I think is the heart of your presentation today. The big picture is that for 150 years, Portland has been on a journey and once upon a time, it was on a downward arc and it had potentially disastrous consequences for the health of this community. And we're now on a pretty sharp rebound and I actually like the admonition that both Bob and Mike shared with us, that while the three arrows that we have in our presentation still seem to defy gravity, that's not inevitable. And that the kinds of decisions we make, that if we don't make, continue to make wise decisions and good investments, that there's nothing inevitable about the line going north or northeast. So much of the work, Mayor, that this bureau does kind of happens under the radar. And I think there's an expectation that BES does excellent work and hits their mark. But I'm very proud on Earth Day that my colleagues get to see really some of the best people in the bureau doing some of the most innovative work and we have a chance to thank them for what they're doing. And perhaps also reflect on what is that next big challenge? What is the next big step that we as a community and council can get around that continues the progress we've made over the last 30, 40 years? So, thank you all very much. I'm pleased to accept the report. Bye.
Saltzman?
Oh, and I want to thank Jim Blackwood of my office for his work as well. Bye.
Well, Commissioner Fish, this report card, watershed report card is such a great idea. I don't know why I didn't think of it when I was in charge. Unless Mike Rosen had it under wraps all these years. But it really is a great tool. I mean, it really is such an understandable tool. I know, having been around BES a long time, we talk a lot about water quality in terms of dissolved solids, biochemical oxygen demand, all these things that are very important temperature, but you know, most people, it's all Greek to them. So putting it into a letter format report card and, you know, serving as the starting point from which we can then measure our, hopefully, our progress as we get better with each of our watersheds. But it's really a great tool. I look forward to seeing the report card on May 1st and thank you very much. Bye.
Novick?
This was a terrific report and many thanks to the BES team and to the community stakeholders testified today. I have to say, that was a tremendous slide. I happen to think that the asset condition slide in your asset management condition report is pretty good, too. But I think maybe literally we should take up the idea of having a slide of the year or sort of like Oscar nominations for slides. Because it's going to add some competitive, you know.
Iteration fund, right.
Yeah. We could ask the auditor to judge it.
Right.
I would have a team of 52 citizens.
Thank you very much. Bye.
By the way, I just got a text from Brad Schmidt. He's at the city archives. He in fact found a memo from Dan Saltzman suggesting this 10 years ago. So I just want to say that in fact it was your idea, Dan.
Fritz?
Well, Commissioner Fish, you continue to make the utilities not only more understandable but more interesting, I think, for many of us. This is the slide in question. I'll just note that right here, right before the upswing is where I got involved. So it just goes to show there's not necessarily a correlation, but it particularly marks the stormwater management manual adoption in 1991, I believe it was, or '92, which my cow, Bob, others worked on diligently and I think was a turning point in our city's management and recognition. We had the, this morning we were looking at, the slide showed about swales and we had the first swale along a local improvement district in the entire city in Southwest Portland in my neighborhood. And it was, it's not as good as the ones we're doing today. Let me just say that. But it was a start. So for Mike Rosen, you've been involved in this for so very long. Thank you very, very much. I want to mention some of the other staff, Jennifer Devlin's here today, but Lana Danaher and Amin Wahab and Ivy Francis and Patrice Mango, some of my heroes who, when I was a fresh person getting involved in watershed issues in deep southwest Portland, were kind and explained what is a macroinvertebrate. And I never got very interested in checking the number of macroinvertebrates in my neighborhoods because I don't like bugs, but I did get very interested in checking water quality and that kept me busy for many years. So, thank you for these report cards and for the fact that you're collecting this data. I am very impressed that you knew the answer to my macroinvertebrate question. I usually like to try to ask my questions ahead of time, but you've got such a great team here that you do, you know what you're doing and you're able to explain it to people in a very understandable way. And so it's terrific. And one final comment, my son, my older son, is a high school social studies teacher. So it's currently getting towards the end of the grading period. And so he spent last week emailing all of the parents in his classes and some of his classes have over 40 kids in them. So that's a lot of emailing to tell them, your son or daughter is failing. And here's why, because they've moved to this performance-based system where if you don't turn in your work at all, you're bound to get an F. And as soon as you turn it in, you don't get an F. And so it's been really motivating that he's been getting emails back from the parents saying, thank you for letting me know. I will make sure that John or Jane gets their work in. And so this is partly your report card to us as to how are we doing as the parents who are overseeing the bureaus, who are, and the community organizing that is going to help get things done. Because government can't do it all and government shouldn't do it all. So it needs to be a partnership with all the watershed councils, with the neighborhood organizations, with the immigrant refugee communities and others, with our native communities who so clearly understand the sacredness of our earth and our water. It's all of us together and so thank you for bringing that today. Bye.
Hales?
A great report. You know, we were talking about data in a completely different context this morning, but it was actually about information technology projects of all things. But in both cases, the ability to produce these kinds of report cards or dashboards and put them on the web, as you're going to do, is a really important public information function and hopefully volunteer motivator. And I take the point about you don't want the situation to look so tough that people don't want to get involved. And so maybe one of the things that you can do and are already planning to do is not just have the report cards and those scores, but also be able to link out to case studies of why did this, why did this number move? Because if people know what the slough used to be like and what it is like now and what people did to make the changes, then they're going to get inspired. And certainly, you know, you and I share the same neighborhood park, the Westmoreland Park, case study of the restoration of the free-flowing stream there and the restoration of a salmon run is an amazing accomplishment. And it's a huge teaching tool for the whole agenda and hopefully motivates people to start thinking about the stream in their neighborhood that maybe hasn't gotten to that condition yet. So I think a combination of this kind of visible, understandable data and stories of here's how Portland did this is enough to get the next generation of activists engaged or at least important to getting the next generation of activists engaged. So I think this is going to, over time, it's not just that one report card or two report, but the practice of this is going to matter, especially, again, the inability of people to necessarily get, you know, as complete a picture of the city as they used to from the media. Their ability to get this kind of information directly, you know, clearly, unfiltered, if you will, but also the backstory of how did that happen or why is this problem so bad? And what could Gresham do to help with Johnson Creek? You know, there's a lot of opportunities to bridge out from this tool itself to a larger agenda and I think you're already obviously on those paths now. So thank you. Good work and it'll be good for years to come. Thank you very much. Bye.
Mayor, can we take a three-minute break?
Yes, take a brief break and then we'll take up our other time-certain item.
Let me send the PowerPoint around to my colleagues.
Take up item 412.
Item 412, amend code to eliminate barriers to accessing administrative appeal processes, including establishing a minimum notice requirement and limiting fees charged to initiate an appeal.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Auditor Caballero.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I am City Auditor Mary Hall Caballero and with me today from my office are ombudsman Margie Salinger and hearings officer Gregory Frank. I'm also joined by Dante James, the Director of the Office of Equity and Human Rights. It is fundamental to good government that people who are materially affected by government actions are afforded the opportunity to contest them. Sometimes due process action Sometimes due process action -- I'm sorry, sometimes due process is required by law, and at other times, we decide to extend it based on a broader sense of what justice and fairness require. The particular avenues to contest a government action are established by City Council. You and your predecessors have created nearly 200 appeal options throughout city code, roughly 70 of which direct appellants to the hearings office, which is located in the auditor's office. The purpose of providing administrative appeals is to create value for both the public and the city through increased transparency and accountability. A cost-effective venue for disputes to be aired reduces the need for them to be litigated in court or the media, which are alternatives that often reinforce perceptions that government can't be trusted to treat people fairly. Appeal hearings provide other benefits as well. They can serve as early warning signs when policy implementation needs corrective action. They also can act as a check on bureaus if discretionary decisions lead to unfair outcomes. Those benefits are undermined, however, when barriers keep the public from accessing their appeal rights. One barrier is not knowing an appeal right exists or how to exercise it. Currently, there is no standard requirement that bureaus notify people that they can appeal the decision. Another obstacle is the cost of admission. In some cases, bureaus charge more than $1,300 to the person who wants to appeal, a fee that is often higher than the amount in dispute. Our purpose today is to enlist your help in clearing the path to administrative appeals and ensuring that the intent for providing them is not subverted. It is up to the people who are materially affected by an action to decide if they want to challenge it through an established review process. They can't access an appeal right granted by council if they don't know it exists, or if the fee is unaffordable or economically irrational. An untenable consequence of these barriers is that people of modest means are disproportionately harmed, effectively closed off from their right to be heard. In my role as City Auditor, I intend to bring attention to these types of inequitable outcomes and make recommendations to help the city move closer to its equity goals. I confess, I didn't expect to find such a pressing example in my own office, and I appreciate the Ombudsman's persistence in finding a solution. More than 20 years ago, our predecessors entered into an agreement to locate the city's hearings office in the auditor's office. Although it acts on behalf of council, the hearings office needs an independent home and administrative support, which is provided by my office. I believe this arrangement is beneficial, but the auditor's office cannot continue as a partner if the inequitable outcomes and obstacles to justice are not removed. With that in mind, I am proposing changes that will remove the barriers, ensure the intent for providing appeals is achieved, and fully realize the important institutional and public benefits associated with them. Ombudsman Solinger will now walk you through the proposal and respond to concerns we heard during its development. She will be followed by testimony from Director James and Hearings Officer Frank. We also have four guests to address the council, and I will introduce them after we take any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Margie Solinger. I'm the Ombudsman for the City of Portland. And I have to say, after the Oscar Award-winning PowerPoint before this, I feel like this might get razzied. I know. But hopefully, it does the job.
You can go for best-supporting data or something.
There you go. All right. So the main components of the ordinance before you today are creating a minimum notice requirement that applies citywide and limiting the filing fees for appeals that are heard by the hearings office. So it's important to note that these two components have different proposed scopes. The minimum notice would apply to all 200 or so appeal avenues within the city, and the fee cap would apply just to the 70 or so that go to the hearings office. Before I get into the details of the ordinance, I want to take a step back first and provide some general background information. I'll also discuss problems with the status quo, offer some specific examples, and answer any questions you might have. So administrative appeals exist for most of the bureaus and functions that interact directly with the public. There's a lot of variety in how these appeals are structured, both across and within bureaus. I'm going to show you a few examples just to give you a sense of what they look like. And they're all going to start the same way, with some sort of bureau decision that triggers an appeal right. This first one is an example of an appeal process that can eventually end up at council. One example that you might be familiar with are the noise variance appeals. They first have to go through some sort of review board decision, and then the person can challenge that before council under Title 18. Another example are the sidewalk assessment remonstrances. Under Title 17, they follow the same structure. This next example is of an appeals avenue that goes to an appeals board or commission. These boards and commissions are generally comprised of staff, or volunteers, or hybrid of the two. And under this structure, the first level of review would go to the bureau or division director. One example that uses this structure are the protests of certain contract awards under Title 5. Another example are the fire marshal citation appeals under Title 31. This slide shows the two different ways appeals can get to the auditor's hearings office. The left side shows the more indirect route, where there is a bureau-level review prior to an appeal to the hearings office. An example of this is when somebody wants to dispute their utility bill. They can bring that complaint to the Administrative Review Commission, and if they disagree with that determination, they can go on to the hearings office. On the right side of the slide shows the direct appeal to the hearings office, and this might happen when the chief traffic engineer might revoke somebody's parking permit, and then they could take that challenge to the hearings office directly. The problem with the current landscape of appeals is that there are no baseline standards to ensure that all of these different types of appeals, no matter how they're structured, are still accessible. Right now, there's no baseline requirement that the city actually tell people when they can appeal something, and in the absence of minimum standards, there's a wide variety of practices. So this is an example of where notice was not given. And this is a typical letter that goes out when the Bureau of Environmental Services charges a property owner for a sewer connection. It's basically just a bill that says, "You owe the city this amount. You have to pay within 90 days, and here's where to send your payment." This charge by the city is actually appealable, but there's nothing in this letter to indicate that City Council has given the property owner the right to appeal. Now, one of our invited presenters today has personal experience getting this type of letter, so I'll let him describe in his testimony what he had to go through to access his appeal process. So Exhibit A of your package is the proposed solution to this problem and contains a new chapter for Title 3, setting out a minimum notice requirement. I'm going to walk you through the main components of it. There's a definitional section which explains the scope of the requirement's application. It's meant to apply to any code or rule-based chance that the public has to appeal a city decision. It does not apply to land use because notification is already governed by a complex regulatory scheme, so on the advice of the city attorney's office, we exempted it. The two main elements of minimum notice are just that it's timely and adequate. And timely just means that we want to tell people about their right to appeal right around the time when that right is triggered. We want to avoid telling people right before the time to appeal expires, after it expires, and we really want to avoid not telling people at all. Adequate notice just means that we're giving people enough information about the underlying decision so that they can determine whether or not they want to challenge it, and we also tell them enough information about logistics of filing an appeal so they know how to invoke it. We've also proposed language in Title 22 that gives the hearings office the ability to enforce the proposed notice requirement for appeals that go before it. So actually, providing this sort of minimum notice should be easy and inexpensive. Some bureaus already do it well using a standard letter. Now, I know this is hard to see, but this is an example from the Bureau of Development Services Code Enforcement Program. In this type of case, a property owner would get a three-page letter. The first two pages are the notice of violation, including a specific list of violations, and on the right side is the standard information sheet that accompanies the notice of violation. And I'm going to magnify that section on the next slide. So this part of the information sheet describes the first step of the appeal process, which is an administrative review. And so here, it tells you about the right to appeal, tells you how much it costs, how many days to file, and where to file the appeal. So that's minimum notice in a nutshell. I'm going to switch gears now and talk about the appeal filing fees. So the problem with the status quo on this issue is that there's no codified requirement that appeal filing fees be set at an affordable or reasonable amount. Currently, the cost to file -- to the public to file an appeal varies widely, and the filing fee for some appeals is over $1,300. To put those fees in perspective, it costs significantly less to file for a circuit court writ of review, which is around $250, and it costs four times less to petition the United States Supreme Court than to appeal some of the city's administrative decisions. These fees mean that many members of our community cannot afford to use their appeal rights, even if they do know about them. Thirty-six percent of Multnomah County residents do not have enough income to meet their basic needs, let alone afford the city's appeal fees. Put another way, for a person living below the federal poverty line, they would have to pay more than 11% of their annual income in order to appeal some types of city decisions. And for someone like the auditor who makes the big bucks, it would be the equivalent impact of a $12,188 fee. The ordinance before you today is focused on the fees for the hearings office appeals because that's where we're seeing the highest fees charged to the public, and because we think the high fees are largely driven by the funding structure of the hearings office, which I've tried to outline on this slide. The way it works generally is that the hearings office has to use an internal cost recovery model for appeal hearings. So going from left to right, you'll see that the hearings office charges the bureau for an appeal hearing. The 1368 at the top there is what the hearings office will charge the bureau for fiscal year 16 and represents 75% of the hearing costs to the auditor's office. Some bureaus are passing along some of those charges to the public in the form of an appeal So here's some of the differing amounts bureaus pass on, and it shows kind of the full spectrum with police not charging any fee at all, going all the way up to a full cost recovery fee for water, environmental services, parks, and developmental services. For those bureaus passing along 100% of the internal charges, that means in order to access the appeal process, the individual member of the public has to pay for all the costs associated with the hearing. That includes things like judge's salary, rent, electricity, office supplies. So I want to give you a real case example of the sort of thing that happens under our current system. My office heard from a woman who earns a living as a school bus driver. She was enrolled in the Utility Bill Low Income Discount Program, and this is a safety net program that allows a one-person household making less than $1,800 per month to receive a discounted bill. The Water Bureau rightfully wants to protect the program against fraud, and for this particular woman, the Water Bureau identified what they believed were some account discrepancies related to water consumption and number of household occupants. After conversations with her that did not resolve their concerns, the bureau decided to terminate her from the discount program. This woman felt that the bureau got it wrong and wanted to appeal. But to challenge her termination by appeal up through the hearings office, she would have to pay over $1,300 in appeal fees to the bureau. And we're asking that amount from someone the city knows makes less than $1,800 per month. Now, to their credit, when I brought this issue to the Water Bureau and the Commissioners' attention, the bureau agreed to set an interim fee of $50 until we could come up with a permanent fix, which is what we're proposing today. The current appeal fees are not just a problem for people who are low income. It says many times the cost of the appeal fee is greater than the underlying amount in question. This slide shows an example of that happening. This is a sample letter issued by the Bureau of Environmental Services Enforcement Program. And a corporation in this instance discharged really terrible things into the waste stream in violation of their permit, and in this letter, the city is demanding compliance and proposing a $500 penalty. To challenge the penalty or get it reduced through the hearings office, the corporation would have to pay an appeal fee of over $1,300 to the bureau. And even though the corporation could likely afford it and even get a full refund if it prevailed, it still would have to bet $1,300 to avoid losing up to 500.
All right. Just, it's important, I think, we make clear what you just said, which is if a corporation -- and I'm going to make a distinction later between corporations and individuals -- if the corporation is successful in the appeal, then they get their appeal fee back in addition to whatever other damages they're eligible for.
So this slide takes the anecdotal observations a little further. You're looking at the number of nuisance abatement appeals over the last 10 years, and these come out of the Bureau of Development Services Code Enforcement Program. The red arrow marks the spot where the bureau started imposing a full cost recovery appeal fee, which at the time was around $1,200. And you'll note that the introduction of the cost recovery fee corresponds with a pretty precipitous drop in the number of appeals to pretty much zero. The one appeal that you see for fiscal year 10, right where the red arrow is, was underway prior to the fee being adopted by council, so my guess is that it came in under the prior fee structure.
Do you happen to have the numbers for how many nuisance abatement citations were filed in those years?
I don't know the appeal rate. No, I don't have the base number.
I'm totally with you on the point of where you're going on this. I know that we cut, or the city cut nuisance abatement staff during the recession, so that might be because we weren't actually citing people for as many nuisances.
Right. Right. This is not established causation, but possibly a correlation. Exhibit B of your package with Title 22 revisions is the proposed solution to the hearings office appeal fee problem. The proposed revisions include setting a nominal fee cap for any appeals going to the hearings office under Title 22 and creating a low-income waiver option for those who cannot afford even a nominal fee. So on this slide, I'm going to illustrate how this proposed ordinance and the auditor's companion budget ask would solve the funding structure problem that's driving these high fees. So going from the hearings office to the bureau, this part of the equation is the budget ask. For code appeals to the hearings office, we want to stop using an internal cost recovery model and fund the hearings office with general fund dollars. This would eliminate the direct charge to the bureau. Going from the bureau to the public, this ordinance proposes to prohibit bureaus from separately charging a filing fee for appeals to the hearings office, and instead, the hearings office would charge no more than a nominal filing fee directly to the public. This revised structure would address both the financial barrier to bringing in appeal to the hearings office, and it would make it so that the bureaus would not have to absorb the cost of each appeal. Adopting this proposal would bring the city into conformance with what we've generally seen in other cities that have a similar hearings office and hear similar case types. For example, cities like Seattle, New York, Washington DC, and Cincinnati don't charge any appeal fees. Albuquerque was the one exception we found, which charges 50 bucks. The last thing I want to address is a consistent question about the ordinance that I've heard from bureaus in some of your offices. And that question is, will making appeals more accessible result in a flood of appeals, especially frivolous ones? We don't really know how many more people will appeal if the process is accessible, but we have a few reasons to believe that a flood of appeals is unlikely. Even without access barriers, appeals are burdensome and stressful. They require time, preparation, and sometimes money if somebody hires a lawyer. We also have examples within the city already of low-cost, well-nosed appeals that have not resulted in an overwhelming flood of appeals. Both vehicle tow's and park exclusions are examples where the city provides notice of the right to appeal and does not charge any appeal fee. This slide shows the last three calendar years of data, and for both types of appeals, the appeal rate is less than 2%. So to borrow a quote from U.S. Supreme Court Justice Stevens regarding a similar floodgate of litigation concern, "Doing justice does not always cause the heavens to fall." That being said, even if there was a flood of appeals, erecting access barriers is an inequitable way to regulate appeal volume. Once an appeal right is created, it should be available to everyone who wants to use it. Instead, there are other, more equitable ways to manage volume of appeals. On the front end, council can make sure that the appeal right is properly scoped, and on the back end, procedural rules and case management techniques are available to manage the flow. Council can also create targeted consequences for repellents that actually bring frivolous Finally, I think it bears mentioning that a lot of appeals wouldn't necessarily mean that it's too easy to appeal. Rather, lots of appeals might signal a problem with the policy's implementation, and that's information the bureau could then use to improve city services. And with that, unless there are questions, I'll pass it over to Dante James.
I guess I have a question, and just a philosophical question. I think the access to justice question is, obviously, in terms of my value system, very important. And removing, reducing the barriers to people having the right to have a fair hearing. So, uniform notice, and done in a certain kind of way, I think, is not on. Reducing the cost and addressing what is really the inequity in the current way we structure it, where we tally up all of our costs and we divide it, you know, in a certain way, and so we end up charging people more than they can afford to exercise a right. The concern that I have, though, is that, is not that the average person would abuse this system, or that a low-income person who feels they've been mistreated is going to abuse the system. My concern is with the people that are abusing the system. And they tend to be large corporations that are big wrongdoers, that go into these processes and, as a result of their appeals, impose enormous costs on the system in terms of staff time and administrative appeal time and hearing officer time. And I don't want to sound cynical, but I'll be cynical for a second. It's my impression that in a number of these cases, it is solely done in order to run the clock out and buy some time. These are not people for whom a reasonable fee structure is a barrier, and these are not people that end up asserting what we would all consider to be meritorious claims. In fact, if we had a Rule 11 for administrative claims, some of these people would be candidates for that. But what they do do is they extend the clock, they prevent us from collecting, and along the way... the way, not only do they not pay, which means other ratepayers have to subsidize their service, but they buy some time. And I see them qualitatively as different from the equitable argument you make about citizens wanting to have access to a hearing officer. So I just want to give you a chance to respond to that, because I'm not yet persuaded that one size fits all, even though I'm very persuaded by the equitable argument you're making as it applies to citizens and particularly people who are of low income. So I welcome your thoughts on that.
So I'm not at all opposed to the idea of a tiered fee structure. I just couldn't come up with one that I thought wasn't over-inclusive. So, one of the concerns we have is that the appeal fee shouldn't exceed the underlying amount in question. And so for some of these cases, I think that you're referring to, the average penalty is $250. So having a $1,300 appeal fee just doesn't seem to make rational sense to me, but having a sanction for frivolous appeals to target that bad behavior would make sense.
And I'll just give you, I think it's fair to put some more meat on the bones. A company or a large organization that says, "We're not required to pay stormwater fees," well, that's a big deal, and we can spend a lot of staff time and other resources, and a year later, we can have a big bill of money, and none of us really think that's a serious claim. Or the person that, to use a more recent example, deliberately bypassed a meter in order to save money, got caught on it, and then objected to the reasonable fee schedule, and so we had an extensive hearing on that and ultimately settled. I just, I want to be careful that we don't create a perverse incentive for people like that to game the system when we're trying to correct, I think, another problem, which I agree with you on, which is removing the barriers for people that have every right to be heard and for whom now the fee structure is an impediment. So as we go through this discussion, I just want to, I want to, I'd like to see if we can separate out the classes, because I think they are totally distinguishable.
I appreciate your reason to concern, although I'm not sure if I follow the scenario. If the current high-fee scenario didn't dissuade what you or I would, in fact, did describe as a frivolous appeal by someone who was trying to game the system, then that still perpetrated an injustice for as long as that appeal was pending, and then the injustice was righted when they lost, so.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, we hope.
Most of them will go to court at that point or something else. But there's two principles. There's the principle of cost recovery. We can't offer this, we can't just give this service away to people. So it's one thing, it's one thing to have them exercise their rights, it's another thing for us to subsidize that right. And the current model, at least for folks, is structured to do some kind of cost recovery. I think it ends up punishing, it obviously punishes a whole class of people, and I think it's inequitable, has to be restructured. But I would hate to, I would hate to just throw the baby away with, you know, with the bathwater on this one, and making an effort to do cost recovery for people for whom the filing fee is not a barrier.
Yeah.
And I just don't want, I don't want those wrongdoers lumped in with everybody else, unless, unless the city is prepared to pick up that cost of the general fund. And I'm going to just go on a limb and say, you might, you might be skeptical of that, particularly if it ends up generating a lot more appeals and therefore more general fund. But that's how I distinguish it. I think, I think for companies that are wrongdoers, having them pay some kind of reasonable fee is not a problem, and it hasn't been a problem. It doesn't, as you point out, it doesn't discourage them from filing appeals, but it gives us an opportunity to do some cost recovery. For this whole class of people that it is a barrier, I think we have to rethink the whole system, and that's why I agree with the principle that she's articulated.
Yeah, well Greg might be able to illuminate that a little bit from some of the cases that you've seen or the patterns of cases that you've seen. Thank you.
I was curious what you envisioned when you said targeted. There could be targeted consequences for frivolous appeals? Any suggestions about what those would be and who makes that determination that an appeal is frivolous?
I think it might be something parallel to the Rule 11 sort of sanctions that Commissioner Fish mentioned, but I mean, there isn't.
I'm not sure if I know what Rule 11 is.
Yeah, well, so it's just a sanction for bringing frivolous claims. Right now, the hearings officer doesn't have that authority, and so that would have to be added to code if that were an option you'd want to consider, but, and I don't know.
The hearings officer right now doesn't have the authority to determine a claim is frivolous?
No, I'll tell you what a frivolous claim might look like, Dan. It might be someone who just says, "I appeal," doesn't set forth a basis, consumes a lot of time, and is at some point unable to articulate a basis. And we want to discourage someone from thinking they can just do that without, without any consequence.
Yeah, no, I can understand that being frivolous, but there's probably a lot of shades to that, too.
So I think maybe a civil penalty could be assessed if a frivolous finding is made.
So is a Rule 11 something we can adopt at the city, or is this?
So council could adopt some version of sanctions for bringing frivolous claims.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions at this point? We should let you move on, because I bet we might even get some answers.
There, actually, I do, I just want to remind you of what the budget ask was.
$56,000 and change.
Okay. All right.
Who's next? I guess that's me. Good afternoon, counsel, Mr. Mayor. Dante James, the Director of the Office of Equity and Human Rights. I appreciate the invitation to be here today from the ombudsman and the auditor. When I first heard of this, I was astounded and shocked that the structure exists in the way that it does. Having been a hearing officer in the city of Denver for over 10 years, I have some idea of how this process can look. The city of Denver charges nothing for appeals. So I think we're here today to talk about three, really, three things. One is transparency, one is accessibility, and the other is accountability. The transparency is simply notice, and I'm struck the fact that we had, in some sense, to defend the idea of giving notice with some staff who think that the idea of, they don't want to give the wrong impression to a petitioner that they may prevail. That just makes no sense to me. I mean, notice is given in some sense in some bureaus and not in others, so there's no consistency. So at the very least, we're trying to be consistent about how we do what we do in the city. The blessing and the curse of the city's structure is that there can be inconsistencies across bureaus. So this seems to be one way to try to remedy that. And talking about accessibility, you know, having sat here last night for most of the evening with you, to council's credit, you were all extremely concerned about the need for accessibility as it relates to TaxiCabs and Uber. I would suggest that this is the same thing. It is about accessibility for everybody who are residents of this city and the opportunity to be able to access the rights and responsibilities of being a resident in the city of Portland and not be kept out of that. And too often, many of the folks who would be kept out are those who are low-income, those who are people of color, those who are maybe English-speaking as a second language, and those are the folks who may not be as savvy about the ways of the city and the way that it works. And so it is about accessibility, so I would encourage you to think about it more broadly in some sense. In terms of accountability, it provides the hearing officer with the authority to ensure best and fair outcomes, and maybe the ability and authority to determine whether there is a frivolous action being brought. As I said, in Denver, there were no, there was no charge for an appeal from any bureaus. I heard plenty of storm and stormwater issues as well as other things. It's a matter of cost recovery versus equity, and so how do we balance that? I would, I would ask you to really consider how you balance that. Is cost recovery more important, or how do we, what expense is it in relation to equity? What do we have to give up in order to do this well and do it right? The, I mean, we've all heard the assumptions of the flood of frivolous appeals, and Commissioner, I appreciate your concern as it relates to corporations versus regular residents, if you will. Having sat for a number of years, as I'm sure you'll hear, here as well, those, there was not a flood certainly of residential petitioners, and the corporations I also didn't see in the same way. I can give you specific examples of cases that were heard that did not come out in their favor, but it was not necessarily as frivolous as one might think, and/or their appeal would then go to district court, and they could take it however they wanted to take it. So I would suggest that we shouldn't allow the exceptions to swallow the rule and to ensure that we're going to do what we best can do to provide consistency, accessibility, transparency, and accountability in doing this work in the city. So I think it really is a prime example of conversation about equity, and I certainly applaud the auditor's office for bringing this to light, and it is an issue, I think, of great importance as an example, a prime example of how do we ensure fairness that makes sense in relation to the structure of the city and cost recovery and all those things. So I would encourage you to very thoughtfully consider how we come to remedy this. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Greg?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is Greg Frank, and I have proudly been the city code hearings officer since the early 2000s. It is a privilege to sit in that chair and render decisions and oversee the cases that I do. The hearings office is somewhat unique, maybe not to you, but certainly to the rest of the city, and that is that I make decisions because you tell me exactly what to do. You tell me what cases that I can hear. You tell me what rules to use in which to make the decisions. And by inference, you'll also tell me who, in some respects, doesn't get access to the cases that I hear and the rules that you make. Dante referenced Uber. My guess is that somewhere, shape, or form, in Uber, you probably put my office. And we do a lot of limited transportation cases, a lot by our standards is four or five maybe a year. I will tell you that most of the people that appear before us in those transportation cases are taxi drivers. They are not rich. They are not well-to-do. Their net worths are not going to make up much, and it's expensive for them to come and fight for their livelihood, and it's important for them, and that's why we see them, I believe. So what we're really talking about here today is you're telling me what cases you want me to hear, and you're telling me what rules I should apply and who's going to hear them, or who's going to have access. That's the bottom line. I don't decide that. I don't decide cases the way I want. I don't decide the cases the way I wish. I decide cases because you give me the rules under which to make those decisions. The modifications you're asking for today, quite honestly, if you ask me from a professional standpoint, I really don't care if they pass or don't pass. Our office will continue to exist and continue to make decisions whether or not you pass these. But if you ask me from a personal note, whether or not I think it's fair, whether or not I think it's right, then I believe that excluding anyone from the access to our office if they disagree with a decision, I think is probably improper. So that's really all I'm really concerned about. Margie brought up the $1,300 fee. I agree with Commissioner Fish, quite honestly, that the way we calculate fees could be done so differently. It does count for hard cases and easy cases, but as it stands now with the way it's structured in the bureaus, $1,300 when you're looking at a nuisance abatement case of $200 or $300 or $400 isn't fair. If we're looking at a Water Bureau case of $200 or $300 or $400, I would guess that if I asked any one of you whether or not you're willing to bet $1,300 to win $250 in any game of chance, you'd probably walk away and say, "I'm not willing to do that," unless your principles are really, really strong. The way it's structured now, it's a deterrent, but it's an, in summary cases, it's an absolute bar. If you're low-income and you can't pay that appeal fee, it doesn't matter if it's refunded or not, you're simply not going to appeal. I'm anticipating that there's going to be a number of questions. And Commissioner Fish, you brought up some really good points that I think you and I could have a discourse probably for two or three hours with the points you raised with the ombudsman, but what I'm going to conclude is, when I was back in school up in Seattle, I had a meeting with somebody that I respect eminently, and that was Chief Justice William O'Douglas of the U.S. Supreme Court. He's from Washington, and he's kind of a backwards guy up there, and he sat around with about 14 or 15 of us. And so I'm going to give you a quote, which I believe is also on the federal courthouse over here, and that is, "The liberties of none are safe unless the liberties of all are protected." And quite honestly, I think that is totally relevant to what we're talking about here, and I'd like to keep that in mind as we go through. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you.
Do you have an opinion about, professionally about this concept of giving you the power in rare cases to essentially fine someone for bringing a frivolous case?
No problems. Let's go back to what I said to start with. You tell me the rules under which I'm going to make the decisions. I do not, I have not met with city attorney and asked whether or not there's any approach to that, but I am now allowed under Title 22, that's my title, in code cases, to assess civil penalties up to $1,000 per day on code violations. We had one, had a hearings officer, forgot to put the end date on it, but it got into the, close to $100,000. So although we're just the City of Portland Hearings Office, we do, you have given me, you have given me the authority to assess up to $1,000 a day in civil penalties. I have no problems in number one, so long as there's some criteria to determine frivolous, which the courts have. If I determine something's frivolous, I have no problems whatsoever in assessing a civil penalty for that.
And you currently have the authority to apply statutory interest?
No, I do not.
And why is that?
Because you have, I'm going back, you haven't given it to me. I am a unique being, the office is. We don't have any more power than you give. You give it to me, then I can answer you. Yes, I do.
So one potential benefit of statutory interest is it keeps pace with inflation, and it at least keeps the clock running for someone who's attempting to bring an appeal just for delay's sake. So is that administratively workable if we gave you that instruction?
It is administratively workable from my perspective, and that is simply the decision-maker's perspective. How it works with the administration at the auditor's office about collecting that money or where it goes from there, that's beyond my purview.
Of course, we do, in the utilities, we have a different tool for an aid of collection that's the last resort, which is we can shut off someone's water if they don't pay and they don't assert a claim, and we very rarely do that, but it is a slightly different tool.
I like, I like the idea.
Interest?
No, well, both, actually, but I like the idea of giving him the authority to declare appeals frivolous.
There's very well-defined standards in the courts, common law standards and statutory standards, so we wouldn't have to make it up, and we could also make clear that it applies in unique circumstances. We don't, we would never want to create a penalty system that says just because someone's, you know, uninformed or didn't do a very good job, that they could be subject to a fine. Have to be someone that you really could say, "You really should have known better. I asked you several times to frame your claim. You didn't. You're just wasting time. You deliberately, you know, violate the rules." At some point, there has to be a sanction for that. I don't know what that would be, but I don't know how you structure it.
It's worth exploring if the statutory basis is there.
I also think interest in some circumstances is reasonable, and actually, the city charges interest on arrears, and I'm not, I'm a little surprised to hear that we don't have that, we're not doing that now, because I think it is one way to keep people honest that owe money and are just gaming the system. the system.
Any other questions or any closing comments from our panel here before we take any other testimony?
I'd be happy to introduce the guests that we've invited.
You have some folks lined up, please.
Rex Burkholder is a former Metro Counselor, you may know, and he will describe his experience with the appeals system in its current state. And we have Janice Thompson of the Citizens Utility Board, Kristin Chambers of the National Lawyers Guild, and Mary McWilliams of the League of Women Voters.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Would you like to meet and get started while the others are showing?
Go ahead, Rex.
Great. My name is Rex Burkholder, live at 2824, now I'm nervous, 2824 Southeast Jam Hill. And I'm here today as a customer of yours, but also a citizen, to tell you a story about how I, my experiences with one of the bureaus of the city and the lack of notice and lackability to make an appeal. And then the process I went through to try to resolve that and met up with the Ombudsman and the Office of the Auditor. I am here to urge you to adopt these recommendations, and so I'm going to tell you my story and try not to get too emotional about it. It began in the summer of 2013 when my neighbor across the street had a sewer failure. Her sewer ran through her backyard, through the neighboring property to Southeast Belmont Street. And she had the city come out, the Bureau of Environmental Services, and try to figure out, "How do we solve this problem?" And BES's solution was to put a new sewer line down Southeast Jam Hill to replace an existing private line that served my house and my neighbor's house, and then to inform us after the decision was made that we now owed $5,000. So I was being asked to replace an existing working system with something new that wasn't necessary to me and paid the same amount as my neighborhood's failed sewer. So I disagreed with this solution. I asked the simple question, "Well, can we talk about this and talk about shared responsibility? Where's my responsibility? How do I go through those steps?" And I was told, "There is no appeal process." So I, you know me. Who told you that? The staff. The staff person working on the project itself, okay? And so, you know me, I'm probably one citizen that knows about public process pretty well and knows a lot of people. And so I said, "Well, I'll just call the next level up and keep them working my way through it." And I've worked my way up the Bureau hierarchy until I reached the former BES Director Dean Marriott and told each level, "There is no appeal process, you just have to pay it." And so in frustration, I said, "Well, I guess I have to hire a lawyer." And Director Marriott said, "Well, we have more than you can ever afford." So I did speak to a lawyer, and they read the code and they just said, "You're going to lose because it's all written, so the Bureau is always right." But I still felt there should be a clear way for a citizen to appeal, to petition his government, his or her government. And I was connected with the city Ombudsman. And so the Ombudsman, she gave me some code that said, "Well, try this," which was to go to the hearings officer. I was not told that it was going to cost money, so that didn't stop me. And for some reason, I never got a bill from the city for this one, I guess. But I went to the-- Put your address back in.
Put your address in. Put your rec--
So we went to the hearings officer, and the hearings officer, well, at the first hearing, no one showed up from BES. The second hearing, the hearings officer heard the case and said basically that this code that was taking me to the hearings officer was actually not applicable in my case. But he also, Mr. Frank, also let the BES staff know that there should be a clear statement of what the appeal process is because there is a review committee process. Well, I went to that review committee. It was made up of staff who all said, "You owe the money, just pay." So, but the end of this, it's not really the money, okay? I wrote the check and I did my part. But the fact that here, a very sophisticated consumer of government services, myself, and someone who knows how the system works very well, was totally frustrated with a simple question of, "Can I sit down with you and talk about what is, what I think is an appropriate amount for me to pay to solve someone else's problem? And let's have a discussion." And I was told time and time and time again, "You have no rights to petition on this one. You have no rights to appeal. There is no process. And yes, if you want to sue us, go ahead, but we'll just use your money to fight you back." So that was disturbing to me, to find a bureaucracy that was so arrogant and so fearful of conversations with its citizens that there is no way of having an appeal there, or that appeal is so hidden, it took me going through the city's Auditor's Office and Ombudsman to find that appeal route and then unsuccessfully. So I am, again, urging you, please make this a consistent, accessible, transparent process so people can actually have the way to ask questions or legitimate, have a discussion, and get their concerns addressed in an appropriate manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Janice Thompson.
Just push the button on the bottom there. There you go.
Janice Thompson, Citizens Utility Board of Oregon. I submitted a memo that I think is near packet.
Yes.
So the timely notice issue, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, but it hasn't been in place, as you've just heard, and it really needs to be consistent. In terms of the, one other element of this is the challenge of identifying, like, which ordinance and which administrative rule applies also needs to be made clear. It just isn't appropriate to have that be left up to the individual person trying to navigate the system. And obviously, that's a particular concern for Portlanders who, you know, may not have access to technology or be really familiar with its use and for whom English is not, you know, first language. In terms of the timely appeal, I think it also speaks to a need for a little bit of a mind shift. Instead of thinking like, "Oh, these are hassles," that these are opportunities to learn and improve, you know, procedures and programs. From there, the third part of the memo, I'll just let you take a look at, but it just outlines potentially the need beyond the utility bureaus, which is CUB's focus, for, you know, some consistent citywide review of things and puts, kind of maps it out visually with this dispute resolution kind of pyramid approach. In terms of the, but I think that, as, and this came up when Margie was giving her presentation, and it kind of is, it's the way, it speaks to just how certain things have evolved in different bureaus and, you know, somebody taking a step back might make sense, again. Not quite, CUB's going to continue to focus on the utility bureaus, but just from this experience, a thought for some citywide review. The, so I really want to focus on just the need to revamp how the Code of Hearings, Code Hearings Office is paid for with appeals. And this is, kind of ties in with the nominal fee presentation under discussion today as well as the previous budget request for the less than $57,000 or whatever. So it just seems like the three items have to be reconciled here and are best addressed by just shifting to general fund support for these categories of fees is we have this, you know, inconsistency in how Portlanders are charged, these high fees, but then also putting the pressure appropriately on the agencies to be fiscally responsible. And so it's reconciling those three points that is challenging and the cost recovery approach just is not always applicable because in this case, it's a financial responsibility piece that creates these problems. So I think this does go hand in hand with the early discussion had related to the auditor side. The tech, which I think should also be noted for a year change. It's like a test. The whole notion of frivolous appeals is to be taken seriously. I think it needs to be recognized, there's very much an in the eye of a beholder dynamic in that the legal, as has been mentioned already, there's the legal world and other sources of information or of other sources of ways to address, you know, potential for frivolous. And it shouldn't just be like, "Oh, we have too many frivolous appeals now. We're just going to slap back those higher fees." The other thing I want to highlight is that if indeed the appeals end up being consistently upheld by the Code Hearings Officer, that I think there really is potential, that a need to evaluate the underlying administrative rules. I mean, and Rex's situation is the same. I, too, have heard, had some calls with people, and when they really take a look, it's like, "Well, it's not even a matter of it being a financial barrier. The stack is decked." The deck is stacked, excuse me. And it's like, "Well, why should I appeal?" And that's a problem, too. The sweet spot in there is not, may not always be being reached. CUB is supportive of the idea of having a fee structure and a differentiation between residential and other kinds of customers and highlight one element of that with regards to BES. But in general, I think the overall goal of this initiative by the Auditor and the Ombudsman is sound, and even if, you know, with the caveats I've mentioned, opening the door for some potential tweaks movement on this is recommended.
So you specifically suggested a $50 minimum fee instead of 25?
I think the 25 is okay. It might be a little low. And I just highlight that, you know, as was mentioned, as an interim step, the Water Bureau is now kind of eating, you know, the difference, but they have now shifted to a $50 fee. And so touching base with them could help evaluate that. At the very least, you know, there should be a low-income waiver option.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and City Commissioners. My name is Kristin Chambers, and I'm here on behalf of the National Lawyers Guild. And we support the Auditor's proposal in full today. It's been apparent to me through listening to your questions and comments that you are already on board with agreeing that the current system is not providing fair access to all Portlanders, so I won't beat that point home. I will make a few points. So I've also provided some written testimony for you today that you can look at in more detail. I would like to mention, though, that I think when there's a fee that is more than the amount in controversy for an appeal, that in essence is creating a penalty for filing a complaint. And while I understand that you can obtain that money returned to you if you prevail, when we're looking at the average Portland citizen who is probably not a lawyer and is probably not being represented by a lawyer, they may not know what's frivolous. They may not know whether they have any basis to stand upon based on the rules, and they may find that out by appealing and learning more about the process. And so to penalize them before they've even gone through the process by the chance that they might be wrong in a good-intentioned way is really to their disadvantage. Secondly, I'd like to follow up on some of this discussion of frivolous complaints. I would like to discourage you from lumping all corporations into one bunch if you do decide to have a different fee for them. I think corporations come in all shapes and sizes, and I don't know what the rate of abuse has been of the system by corporations, but I would hope that it's not a large percentage of them. And so it seems like that that problem could be more appropriately remedied by looking at particular consequences for those who are abusing the system. One consideration might be screening complaints more early on or having certain requirements that when you appeal, you have to say, "More than I appeal," which could be important.
What do you think of a sliding scale? I mean, in most of the legal world, particularly in private dispute resolution, there's a sliding scale based on the amount of the claim. So I'm guessing most of the work we do these days is arbitration, not courts, and the arbitration has a sliding scale based on the amount in controversy. And I, by no means of lumping all companies into the wrongdoer category, but since the equity argument here is access to judgment, access to justice, I just want to be sure that people that otherwise have access, plenty of it, high-paid lawyers, and the ability to raise constitutional arguments about whether they have to pay stormwater fees are not necessarily subsidized by the taxpayers indefinitely. And that's my concern. And we are getting claims like that. We're getting people, the arts tax now, it's very, it's more prevalent that people are raising constitutional arguments as to why we can't impose that tax. We're hearing arguments about whether it's legal to apply a stormwater fee for off-site stormwater management. These are important issues, and people have a right to be heard, but I wonder whether a sliding scale, I get the point about saying the fee shouldn't be more than the claim, but I wonder if it's inequitable to say, I mean, we do have a progressive income tax. What if it's, is it inequitable to say that if it's a $250,000 claim, you have to contribute something towards the cost? That's the point I'm trying to make.
I don't know that it matters so much what the amount in controversy is in terms of the sliding scale because that's not factoring in the accessibility of being able to pay. So, for example, I'm a civil litigator, and in my world, we do have sliding fees, scale fees, on what we have to pay based on the amount in controversy. However, we, my firm does a lot of plaintiff's lawyer work, and we work on a contingency fee where we often pay all the costs upfront and take all the risk because otherwise our client couldn't afford to pursue it. So I think there's a real distinction there between how much the claim is and the individual's ability to pay. And also, it sounds like, again, I'm not fully aware of the extent of the problem here, but it sounds like you're talking about some specific corporations that are repeat offenders that are using this tactic again and again, or it's something that's easily identifiable and you kind of know what's going on. And I'm wondering if that is something either as part of the screening process or as part of the analysis by the hearings officer that he could have authority to sanction that for up to the total amount of the cost of the process, maybe more if it's a repeat violation to help fund the services for other people, if there are really businesses that are using this for improper means and can afford to pay it, and that's really not the issue. The last thing I'd like to touch on is what the real value of an appeal is to an individual, whether they're doing it on their own or whether part of a corporation, assuming that they're doing it for the right reasons. And I think an important component of access to justice is procedural justice. In other words, the perception of the person who is appealing that they are participating in a fair process. And a huge aspect of that is being able to just be heard. We know this is very valuable instinctively, and also there have been studies that have been shown that people who have the opportunity to be heard are more satisfied with the outcomes even if those outcomes are against their interest. So even if they lose, the fact that they're heard helps restore people's faith in the system, their respect for other people and the government. And so I think that that's an important factor to consider, and I believe that the Auditor's proposal gives Portlanders that voice and that opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Mary McWilliams, representing the League of Women Voters of Portland. Debbie Iona, the League's Action Chair, is also here. The League wholeheartedly supports the Ombudsman and Auditor's proposed reforms to the city's administrative-- administrative appeals processes. The League is an organization that places a high value on a citizen's right to know, transparency, and accountability. We believe the recommended legislative changes are appropriate, and we urge you to adopt them. When the right to appeal a city bureau's decision exists, that right and the steps needed to initiate an appeal should be clearly stated in the bureau's written communication with the public. Multiple inquiries to bureau staff and city council offices should not be necessary for a community member or business owner to understand that they have the right to appeal and how to access the appeal process. The cost of appeals is another issue that the proposal addresses. Currently, the system is based on a cost-recovery model. It is possible for a Portland resident or business owner to spend more money to appeal a city decision than the dollar amount in question. The League supports adoption of a nominal fee for all appeals, but as fees can be complicated issue across bureaus and departments, and while we support adoption of a nominal fee for all appeals, it couldn't hurt to explore other possible fee structures. The nominal fee approach eliminates the need to consider the costs when appealing a city decision and opens the door to individuals and businesses to appeal city decisions regardless of means. Cub's suggestion that the city explore the option of charging different fees for commercial versus residential customers merits your consideration. These adjustments to the city's administrative appeal processes provides an opportunity to enhance services to the people of Portland. As the League has followed closely the city's police oversight system, we have become aware of the potential to improve city services through consideration of community complaints. Similarly, if the appeals process offered by other city bureaus are made more readily available to residents and businesses through both notification and nominal fees, city bureaus will be able to gain greater awareness of shortcomings in their policies and decision-making processes. Thank you for considering our views on this important issue. The League urges you to support the ombudsman's and auditor's proposed changes to the city's appeals processes. Any expiration of different fees for residential versus commercial customers should not delay the adoption of the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Okay, others, is there another panel, or are we to public testimony? Okay, public testimony, please. Anyone signed up?
Yes, we have four people left on the list. They are Wendy Fleming, Leo Rhodes, Ibrahim Mubarak, and Paul Van Orden.
Come on up, please. I think there are four seats.
Did Leo leave? He's coming back.
Okay. Go ahead, you can start, and there's a button on the bottom of that microphone there. There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to share my experience with review and appeal process with you.
Could you move the microphone a little closer?
Closer. What's your name?
Wendy Fleming. Last November, I learned my home had a party sewer with, of all things, the house behind me. Sounds like someone else did as well. At that time, I was told there was a sewer main with a lateral in front of my house for my use, but that my neighbors to the north were using it. These neighbors also have a sewer lateral in front of their home that's not being used. However, when my contractor went to get a permit, he was told I'd have to pay to build a new lateral. Confused, I called the BES and was told there's no law prohibiting my neighbors from using a lateral in front of someone else's home. And although the city had requested my neighbors provide proof their line was conforming, they refused to cooperate. Since I couldn't prove their line was non-conforming, they would be allowed to remain, and I would be forced to pay to have a new lateral built, something the city charges nearly $6,000 for. I was given no indication I could appeal this decision. Frustrated that it appeared my neighbors' refusal to cooperate with the city may cost me thousands of dollars, I contacted the ombudsman's office to see if anything could be done. Margie Solinger helped arrange an administrative review that was held earlier this month. At the review, I pointed out city code includes enforcement provisions that could be used if my neighbors refused to comply, and the review committee agreed to look into it. Rather than require my neighbors to provide proof, the BES sent a crew to locate their line. They found that the line did not cross onto my private property, and the final determination letter states that my neighbor's line is conforming. Prior to the review, I wasn't familiar with the distinction between public and private property, and we had no idea where my neighbor's line was located. Afterwards, I realized that my neighbor's line crossed public property in front of my home, and that also meets the definition of a non-conforming sewer, a private sewer located on public or private property that is not on the same property as the structure being served. In other words, there is a law that says you can't use a lateral in front of someone else's home, although the wording is confusing. I think this shows that the review process can be used to gain information, to increase understanding, and to improve the services the city provides if approached with that intention. After all, how can any person or any system improve if they refuse to consider feedback? In my case, less than 24 hours after I brought this information to the attention of the chair of the review committee, I was told the BES would simply adopt the portion of my neighbor's line that was non-conforming, thereby making it conforming. Initially, I'd been told the cost to appeal the decision would be over $1,300. However, on Friday, I was told the BES now considers this a rout of service issue, and therefore it can't be appealed at all. Based on my experience, I would ask that in addition to establishing a uniform, transparent, and affordable appeal process, you ensure the code hearings office makes the final determination as to what can be appealed. Thank you.
Thank you.
In your particular matter, you're meeting with Bill Ryan on Friday?
That's right, through your office. Thank you very much.
I just want to make sure that you feel you're being treated fairly. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Ibrahim?
All right. Okay. I'm Ibrahim Mubarak from Right to Survive, and what, what I want to talk about the equality of, of things that's going in this country, this state, this city. We all, we all treat people equally per constitution and per what God say, all people are created equal. I mean, if I say all men, I think I was sexist, so I say all people. However, when it comes down to the low-income people, I don't think it's no equality done unless it's with money. And that's only equality that I see that's done in this community, in this city, and in this state. Low-income to no-income people can't afford the high fee, the non-refundable fee, the fares to do a hearing where they may get a ticket for $250, which they can't afford anyway, but then in order to get a fair hearing, they have to pay anywhere from $1,000 to $1,300, even if they create an organization like they, right, we deal with Right to Survive. We are a poor organization, and we have to pay those high fees in order to get a hearing or fair trade. And if you're saying that you're doing things equal in that financial step, why can't you do things equal to the people living on the streets, so they should have the same rights, not just when it comes to financial capabilities? And that's why I think I agree with everyone that spoke here that this auto proposal is a good proposal, where it should have a sliding scale to a person, to an organization's income, to a person's income and their social status. Otherwise, you're not treating people equal unless you're just looking at the financial aspect of that person and then their job and their employment. They may not be able to afford that. This is an abusive system, and, and again, when you do pay that, it's non-refundable, so where are they going to get that money to pay that? If they don't, they've been criminalized. And that, and I think that's profiling and targeting on the poor people in this city and this state and in this country.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Sean Orden.
How you doing? My members of city council, my name is Paul Van Orden. I'm a resident in north northeast Portland. I'm a Quaker, and I've worked for 25 years as a career environmental law officer. I speak today as a citizen on my lunch break from work and not in any capacity tied to my role as an employee at the city of Portland. For many years, I've observed a disproportionate approach to enforcement translating to neighbors of limited fiscal capacity feel the brunt of enforcement. This can be contrasted to the example of affluent folks like appointed city design commissioner Ben Kaiser, observed violating Title 33, the very code he has been appointed to, by the city to uphold. If we can't find a wealthy man like Ben Kaiser and his business associates to an equitable level to bring them into compliance, we should not remove the rights of less affluent citizens to challenges, to challenge the cases that have been brought against them. As a career environmental officer, I have experience working in Newark, New Jersey, on cases with fines ranging into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Increasing the ability for citizens and corporations to appeal is not something as a professional in this field that I see a problem with in my 25-year career. I've won between 95% and 99% of my cases, and ethical, well-prepared, and strong case does not fear appeals that allow reasonable levels of questioning authority. I wish to, to thank the ombuds office for undertaking the effort to fix a small body of some of the inequities that we have in our enforcement systems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Leo Rhodes, and I'm also with the Right to Survive, but also I'd like to talk also or about or represent the minorities and also the low-income people, which I am formerly homeless. So the $1,300 and $1,000 is, might as well be a million dollars to a low-income people, because it is really hard to get that money. And for an appeal, I mean, that's kind of ludicrous to say, okay, I want my rights, and I don't think I've been charged right here, so I want to appeal it, and then all of a sudden you say, okay, well, that's $1,300 or $1,000 on that. Okay, so if you do have that money and if you do do that, then where's your rent going to go? Where's your food going to come from? All of that money is going towards this appeal. And, you know, it's really, really hard for individuals that are low-income to do this kind of stuff, have this right to appeal with the money. They do have a right, it's the United States, it's in the Constitution of a right to appeal, but to put this monetary status on it is not right. They should have it, I say zero, just like the rest of the United States is, except for the one state. But, you know, if it happens there, it can happen here, you know, and that's what it should be for the low-income people here. So, thank you. Thanks for bringing this issue on up, because it's way past due. There are a lot of people out there that do need this process. And then also, I like the, the transparency or the notice. I do know, yeah, that a lot of people, including me, don't have this knowledge, and so once we go through it, yeah, we don't know, there's blocks there and stuff. We learn as we go along. So that's what I really would like, is, you know, to have this process where they can find and understand this stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Leo, welcome back to City Hall.
Thank you.
Hey, job, he can be found at the Whole Foods on Sandy, and he has a book of poetry forthcoming.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Questions of the auditor, Mayor?
Yes, please. Come on back.
Well, Madam Auditor, a few questions from what we've heard. I thought whoever testified in favor of the notice of appeal citing to the statute that govern, I thought that was an interesting point. So I looked at Exhibit A, Title III Administration, in 3.130.020B, and it says, short plane statement, let's see, of the notice, wait a second. So the, yeah, it describes what the notice has to have, and I think this idea of uniform notices of appeal is spot on. As I read it, it doesn't appear to mandate that the bureaus cite to the statute that applies. Any reason why we shouldn't add that as a subie?
No. It was in a prior draft, and it got edited out, so.
And is there, have we heard any feedback from the bureaus where that would be burdensome or, or, I mean, if they can't figure out the statutory basis? What would be your suggestion there? The citation to both the rules that govern appeals and to the substantive statute that governs the basis for the action taken by the bureau? So both?
Right.
Well, I'm going to make that, I'm going to offer that as an amendment, and I think it's probably a friendly amendment, but I'm going to offer, let's park that maybe as potential amendments, because I think that goes directly to what you're trying to do around notice and puts people on notice of where they can find statute. And if they Google it, I'm assuming they can pick it right up offline or find it somewhere, so it'll make it easier. The $57,000 in your budget request, that's based on what assumption?
That is based on the predictions from the bureaus in the coming year of what they think they're going to generate in code appeals or code enforcement and appeals cases. And so it's a projected number based on what we think is going to happen.
Based largely on current rate of appeals or, or on a projected higher volume?
I'm going to let Sarah Landis answer that question. She's more familiar with the budget request.
I want to make sure it has built in a contingency, because I'm not sure what happens if we blow through that amount.
Well, I have another issue to raise that...
Sarah, how do you get the 57, and what happens if our projections are on the conservative end?
Sarah Landis, City Auditor's Office. The projection does not include a contingency. It is strictly based on the number of cases that bureaus with, whom we have interagency agreements, the number of cases that they intend, that they thought that we might hear next year. Trying to do a conservative budget ask without any assumptions that any legislative changes would bring changes in workload.
If, if after six months, this $57,000 was eaten up, would your intention be to bring a further request and a budget modification?
We would, we would need to do so. We do have some flexibility in our budget in the hearings office right now to have an on-call land use hearings officer, so that person could pick up some of the workload that Greg currently has with land use hearings and allow him more time to focus on the code hearings. But it's our intention to collect really robust data and to try to suss out whether, whether there are new appeal avenues being utilized as a result of a legislative change, and to track very closely the numbers of, of cases and where they're coming from.
And that data would come to us at the end of the one-year pilot project as part of a report on what our experience has been and whether you recommend any further changes?
Right. And I think there's also a larger question about the, the overall funding structure of the, of the hearings office. This is just addressing, you know, the code portion of our budget, but there are financial policies that are, we are out of compliance with in the way that we're recovering funds for our, that office.
Judge, what kinds of cases routinely involve a stay of the administrative proceeding pending the hearing?
For the most part, just exclusions.
So in almost every other case, there's no stay? In other words, the, the money, if there's a fine or a, or a delinquent bill, it's, it still has to be paid even though someone's in an, in an appeal?
There isn't, to my knowledge, there is nothing that addresses that specifically. When the case is in front of me, I do not order, whether it be interim or final or whatever you want to call it, I do not order that the money be paid or not paid. In other words, stay or no stay. That's not something that I do.
What, what do you think of the idea of in certain circumstances giving you the discretion to, to apply interest to whatever your, your judgment is?
That's your call, not mine. I have, from, from my perspective, judges do it. As a statutory matter, I have no problems with you giving me that authority.
Madam Auditor, do you have an opinion on interest, including whether if we, if it was within the discretion of the judge, it kicked in, it, it only applied to a certain class of cases?
I, I don't have a problem with that, and my preference would be that those kinds of decisions remain with the hearings officer, and I think that those would go a long way in addressing your concerns that people would be gaming the system. And it would, I think, instead of barring them from the door, it would signal to them that if they are going to try to game the system, that there is the potential for a penalty. And I think that gets us around the dragnet effect of trying to do something, you know, you've already provided the appeal to these groups, and so instead of trying to bar the door through some sort of process, that we could leave it in the discretion of the hearings office to be on guard for those kinds of things, and should they appear, that he could at that point take action.
So if, if we were to craft something that said, in, in a very rare case, at the sole discretion of the judge, if he or she determines the case is, you know, is without merit or however you want to craft it, the remedy could include interest and potentially a penalty described as X. Do you think we could craft something just for purpose of discussion?
You mean today?
Well, I don't have a... Well, I don't have a...
The other option I would recommend, assuming these are amendments that you like, that would like to add to the package, is because this is a non-emergency ordinance, I'd recommend just continuing it a week and giving you a chance to put these thoughts on paper as amendments and bring the revised ordinance back as a substitute.
See what the council thinks at that point. Would you be open to working up, for purposes of our discussion, something that would give the judge the discretion at the back end if it was a case without merit to award something, whether it's interest or penalty or whatever you and I work out, in addition to an amendment to Exhibit A?
So, is that different than the question you just asked?
I'm just saying, are you amenable to what the mayor suggested?
Yes.
That we continue this for a week?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You and I would get together and see if we could agree on some language?
Yes.
And Sarah has said we'd get a report at the end of the year. Is that in the, is that in the legislation, or is that just your now, that's your intent that you stated on the record?
It's our intent. We are gonna have to come with a budget ask next year to fix the funding structure, and at that point, we hope to have enough data to let you know whether or not we're staffed at the appropriate level.
One last question. I thought the person who testified for the National Lawyers Guild said something interesting about the value of having your day in court, of having a hearing, and even if you don't prevail. And as a former plaintiff's lawyer with a lot of hopeless cases, that I would say was very valuable. Do we have a mechanism that allows the parties to decide to go to mediation in lieu of the hearing? Or some equivalent of mediation where there's a chance to talk more informally about the claim, and which at least I think we have in our legal experiences, have found to be very valuable in giving someone a hearing, but also sometimes choking off cases before you have to put a lot of time and energy into it?
That provision is not in the code at this time. We do not have it in our rules at this time. Once again, if it is what the council desires, if they have an intermediary step, then that's what will follow. If you'll understand, and I had it in my opening comments, but after hearing some of the discussion, I cut it out, but there's a lot of bureau decisions made every single day that aren't appealable to anybody, whether it be a supervisor, a committee, or the hearings officer. There's just those decisions. There's the other extreme that they go to the hearings officer through some intermediate mechanism. My focus is when it comes to me, is I perceive that as a contested case, and we simply have the hearing because we are, under the code, required to hold the hearing within thirty days. If you tell me that there is a possibility of sending people, giving them an option to go to mediation, that's not...
See, I don't think we're gonna, in the timeframe we're operating under, gonna get there, but since your proceeding results in a winner and a loser...
It does.
I would like us, Mayor, to consider whether there's a mediation-type option in certain cases that we could craft. That actually makes the person bringing the claim the master of his or her claim. It gives them a chance to do justice without going through a hearing.
I like that, especially since we have that function inside the walls of city government already in the ONI office, so...
But I think it's gonna be hard to craft quickly, but I would hope it's something we can take a look at and see. Maybe Dante had an experience in Denver.
Listening to the question, there were times, certainly in lower-level issues, when pro se petitioner was there, that I would, because I was, I had the authority of the director, essentially. It wasn't necessarily statutory. And so, I, there were times when I would literally stop the hearing and say, we're gonna take a recess, and you, the two, the representative from the agency and the petitioner, I'm gonna send you outside, and you're gonna come to a better conclusion than you would much prefer than if I make a decision. And more often than not, they would come back, and they would have reached some reconciliation. And so, there were times I just said, we're gonna stop, because clearly you two have not communicated before. And so, I'm gonna send you out so you can do that, and then come back and tell me where you are, and we start again or not.
Frankly, where I would find that compelling is if you stopped the proceeding, called someone from one of my utilities, you know, took them aside and said, based on what I've heard, work this out.
Well, that's who was representing the agency, somebody from the bureau.
And come back and tell me whether you can or not, but it would be in your interest to work this out.
And that's exactly how I said it.
Commissioner, that occurs in code cases, and we keep, it's always a distinction, but code cases are brought by the city. Appeal cases, which we're talking about here, are not. They're brought by the citizen or the entity. That technique is simply a judicial technique, that if you perceive that there's an opening for an agreement, then it makes entirely good sense. It takes time, and I only use it personally when I think I can be productive.
Well, because I think the spirit of these things always ought to be to do justice. I mean, it's, we have rules, and we have guidelines, we have time limits, but at the end of the day, if a citizen comes in on a claim, our theory should be to do justice.
Mr. Burkholder's case is a case in example, is that is a case...
Guy to game the system, and still here complaining.
Yeah, he's still trying to game the system.
Pay the fee. I think it's outrageous.
Mr. Burkholder was incredibly respectful. He was incredibly professional. He came to me. He heard something that he didn't want to hear, and I remanded it back to one of your bureaus, and from what I understood, sort of second-hand, is that he accepted the process because we sent him back, and in essence, not in my room, but in another room, they came to an agreement. That one I actually sent back. I have within my powers right now to remand, and a remand is a very forceful, in essence, position, saying, go back and fix it, because it's gotta be fixed. Usually, that occurs when I perceive the bureau has had some technical issue along the way, and they need to go back and fix it.
Thank you.
Well, then, I'd like to suggest, if, given this discussion, that we do continue this, give you or anyone else in the council a chance that wants to suggest some further amendments to do so.
Might I have an opportunity to testify?
You mean to speak?
I haven't said anything yet.
Yes, okay. You may, but I'm also gonna pass the gavel to Commissioner Novak, because I have to leave. But I will do that and let you continue the discussion, and again, the presiding officer of the council at that point can continue this until next week, but that sounds like what I would like to do as well.
It's an issue that I think you'll be interested in.
All right, I can stay for another couple of minutes before Zach grabs me by the scruff of the neck. Go ahead.
Well, the council did have a discussion about demolition delays.
Yes.
And part of the outcome of that was that we were going to have this appeal to the code hearings office to allow the sixty-day demo delay.
Right.
So, that's a very different kind of appeal from the, my fine is too much, my bill is too high. It's a, I don't like this development action in my neighborhood demolition. And we had estimated that just for that one process, it was going to be ninety-two thousand dollars that we would be needing to pay the code hearings officer. So, there's two issues there. One, because that was twenty percent of the expected demo delays that we expected to get appealed. So, it's a question of the amount of money that's being requested. There's also the question of doing away with the fee, which I actually support completely doing away with the fee, a five dollar or twenty-five dollar or fifty dollar. If it's nominal to one person, if you're on an eight-hundred-dollar social security check, it's, five dollars is still out of the realm of possibility. So, I would support going to no fee, but then that removes the safeguard that we put in place for demolitions, that the fee waiver was for neighborhood associations who go through a process rather than for Joe or Jane homeowner next door who's just ticked with a developer and wants to delay them for another thirty days.
Okay. No, that does have to be considered.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. I just want to comment before I leave. I have to race off to something else. I'm really glad you brought this forward. This is the right thing to do. Obviously, there's some more work to do to shape it. I can't help but be struck by what may seem an anomalous comparison, but I don't think it is. In the wake of the Ferguson tragedy, there's been some attention to the fact that not just Ferguson, although they were most pointed out for it, but a whole bunch of little municipalities that are too small to actually be municipalities, there survive financially by charging people court fines for damn near everything they can think of. And what a contrast with what you're proposing here to make the system much more just for everyone, rather than distorting the relationship between the government and its citizens with prohibited charges or, in some cases, confiscatory ones. So, I just think this is really a very Portland thing to do, and I really appreciate you bringing it forward.
Mayor, one question for you, since you're the maker of the budget, is, and you've expressed your support for the concept, is your preference to have a placeholder number that's based on some reasonable guesstimate or to inflate it to cover some reasonable contingency, so there's one budget ask for the season?
I think, given that we have a contingency budget, and we will have one in my proposed budget, and I suspect we'll have one of some amount when we get done, I'd rather have you make your best guesstimate at what you think this will be, with an understanding that this is a guesstimate, not a, not a, not the kind of forecast that we have typically in bureaus, and then have a council understanding that there'll be a contingency ask if we turn out to be low in that number.
Okay. Because we learned about the ninety-two thousand dollar figure recently before we made our budget ask, and so...
Yeah. Well, we'll talk about what that number should be.
Okay.
Or that might get carved out altogether, it sounds to me. It sounds like it might be a whole different...
That's a possibility, yeah.
Thank you.
So, I know that the mayor has to go. I would appreciate some discussion of the, I think, important issue I've raised.
I'd be happy to do that.
So, what, Madam Auditor, what do you think, what do you think, what's, oh, sorry. Madam Auditor, what do you think the appropriate response would be?
The appropriate response to the ninety-two thousand dollar issue?
No, it's, the issue is partly the ninety-two thousand, because obviously you can just ask for more.
Right.
But the issue is, in that particular instance, is there a public purpose in dissuading Joe Citizen, Jane Citizen from appealing a demolition permit?
You know, that, when we discussed this yesterday, it was the first that that had been brought to my attention, so I have not considered, that is a little bit different kind of issue than an appeal of an action that's been taken against somebody who can come to the hearings office. So, I would ask Greg if he had any sort of initial impression, because I don't, I haven't reviewed that information since you brought it to my attention yesterday, and so, I don't, as I sit here, have an answer for you.
Commissioner Fritz, do you, I think you've raised a great point, but is it, is it something that can be reconciled with this proposal, or is it something that gets carved out altogether, because it's so different?
I don't have a particular answer to my question. I just, I'm raising it because it's an issue that is different, and I'd like some discussion about the merits of potentially seriously aggrieved Joe homeowner in, who's a low-income person who can't afford thirteen hundred dollars versus some of our neighbors in East Moreland who are funding a zone change request to get rid of demolitions in their neighborhood.
Do you want to have that discussion now or as part of the conversations that we'll be having with the auditor as this matter gets continued for a week?
Well, given that two of our colleagues aren't able to be here, and I think it really is a policy question for the council to grapple with, I would like to hear Mr. Frank's feedback on that, because I know you have done land use hearings as well as code hearings.
Can I ask you a question? And that is, is the demolition, and I've met with Crystal Cowan and Douglas Hardy and a couple other folks on this, and reviewed a very early draft from my perspective, not to say what I would or wouldn't do in a particular case, but these are the kind of issues that I have with the language, that it's gonna make it harder for me to make a decision. So, from that perspective, I have reviewed an early version of the code. There was a discussion about the fees and the fee waivers, and my perspective on that was that we are really pretty good at making decisions, but we're not very good at making money decisions, in other words, handling money. And so, my request to those folks at BDS was, please, whatever you do with the money other than the fee waiver, please deal with that on the first floor. With the fee waiver, I said, the more criteria you can give me, whether or not you're gonna use the court models or whatever, the happier I would be. So, that's how I responded. But my question was, is, this is a Title 33 issue, isn't it?
No, it's Title 24.
Twenty-four. All right, so it would fall within, okay.
And it's, and the way we ended up with the code language which we should have adopted was just the fee waiver for neighborhood associations. I don't think there's a reference to a fee waiver for low-income or anybody else.
My position is kind of the same, then, is I'm not, I would prefer access to justice to be access to justice. And that means that the lower or zero fees, appellate fees, would be in existence. I certainly understand, because I heard a number of the comments from the BDS folks, that they are really concerned with frivolous appeals. I mean, they truly are concerned with frivolous appeals simply to slow down the process. And I can understand that.
Because it does stop the process for demo delay.
It does.
Also, in my case, it has the effect, some of those cases with lots of lawyers, lots of money, and some rather finely tuned arguments, do have the effect of consuming a lot of the resources the city's making available. So, in a way, the average person is subsidizing the big company that's consuming a lot of your office time on a case.
Can I just add, if I understand what you're raising? Council via code decides who has standing to appeal, so you define who is an interested party, who can be an appellant. So, if you're concerned that this broader group of folks are going to be able to access the process, I think a possible remedy to that would be to narrow the scope of the appeal right, not necessarily having to raise the fees for certain groups of people.
I would think if we went back to do that, we would always give an appeal right to the person living next door. I mean, the way we managed that and we came to a decision was that the person next door has to go to the neighborhood association, and there has to be a plan for what, how we're gonna move the house or save the house or buy the house in order to be able to go and ask for the sixty-day delay. But I appreciate the thought. It's just that I think anybody should have, the person living next door, if, either we change it so that it's only neighborhood associations that can appeal, but that doesn't seem fair either, that...
Are there some neighborhoods that don't have an association?
They all, everybody has a neighborhood association.
Everybody has a, okay.
But I think there are some that aren't necessarily representative of the folks who live in the neighborhood.
Right. On the other hand, it's generally the home, more affluent homeowners who are at the neighborhood association who are more concerned about the demolitions. Not exclusively, though, we had a lot of testimony from renters who were being displaced at the hearings.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that, in general, neighborhood associations are on it, but that then there are other individuals. So, it's a question that I think we should be thinking about as we're considering when to bring this back and what the rules should be for that, whether it's excluded or all-in, wait and see what happens. But we were quite nervous even about the twenty percent of appeals from neighborhood associations costing ninety-two thousand dollars.
Commissioner, do you think perhaps we should take more than a week to bring this back? It sounds like there's a few issues that we haven't all thought through, and maybe if we're going to come back, we should give people some time to have some discussions and to come up with amendments, et cetera.
And there was one other issue, which is, we're all tied up on Friday, so we have one last day to talk to you.
The challenge, though, is that we really need all five of us together to make this policy decision, and we're not allowed to talk about policy at our retreat on Friday. So, I was really hoping that we would have all five of us to have a robust discussion today after I had briefed the auditor yesterday, and so...
Well, here's what we could do, right? The way it's established now, we're continuing it for a week so we can have conversations with the auditor and her team about possible amendments. You've identified an issue that I think needs to be explored, and there's a number of ways to do it. It could be around standing, it can be a carve-out. I'm having trouble getting my arms around how to resolve it, but that's because I think I'm having uber fatigue.
Yes. And there's that, too.
We were here late last night, so, but the additional week would give us a chance to do that, and then when we come back next week, we can have the policy discussion that, around each of the amendments, and then to see whether we're ready to proceed to vote. Does that make sense?
I won't be here next week, but...
Oh, that's right.
I don't know if that's how we deal with that.
You're not here in the morning and the afternoon?
Right. I'm not getting back till, I'm in DC until Thursday night.
Oh. Commissioner Fish, you're gone in the morning, and Commissioner Fritz, you're...
Oh. Well, do you mind if we continue this two weeks, Madam Auditor?
You know, actually, I am going to be gone the following week, so it would have to be three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Is that, are you okay with that?
I would be okay with that.
There is a sense of urgency, but if you wouldn't mind, then it gives us a chance to get it right.
In three weeks, you're gone, Commissioner Fish.
Oh.
Cancel my daughter's graduation. There, this, well, I'm gone the Wednesday and Thursday?
You're gone... You're gone Wednesday morning, I believe, the Wednesday afternoon, that's May 13th.
But Thursday?
You're gone Thursday, the 14th.
Well, all right, Carla, what's the next date you can give us?
Boy, let's see, if you wanna do a, looks like everybody's in on the 20th, May 20th, the Wednesday.
And I think in terms of the budget, what I've heard today is very much agreement that we'd like to do this. I commend Ombudsman Solange and Auditor Caballero. It's astonishing that within four months of your arriving here, you've been able to work with the Ombudsman and bring this to us, and it's exciting, it's one of your first major policy initiatives. So I don't think there's gonna be a problem, at least from my perspective, with approving at least $56,000 as a pilot, as a number of one time, and it's just one-time money for this, to see how it goes. So in terms of getting whatever we choose adopted, is it, is there a target date for implementation? Is it, would it be July 1st?
For this proposal, this would be September 1st, and then the budget would be July the 1st.
Oh, good, so we have the time. In fact, your predecessor used to come before us regularly and complain that we were cutting her budget, so I think you've now set a precedent of getting additional money for your budget, so...
She was in some cut...
It's not getting the habit of this.
Yeah, she was, she presided in cut years.
Well, I think the mayor, it's very interesting, the mayor has kept his cards close on all of his funding things, but I think he essentially said he's gonna fund this, so if that, if that, and if you're looking at September 1st, you said?
Or the legislative, this would go into effect on September 1st.
Yeah, so are we okay with the 20th?
And is there a time certain, Carla?
It would be 2:00. Was there a reason the 13th afternoon didn't work? I show everybody in that afternoon, and that's after your IPR code changes, Auditor. Did you not...
I think it's better to go one more out.
Okay.
Commissioner Fritz will be preparing for the benefit that's honoring her that later afternoon.
He knows more about my schedule than I do.
I'm host, I'm the emcee, so I have to get my beauty rest, too.
So 2:00 on the 20th?
The 20th, yes, there is a 6:30 budget committee, but I think she'd be okay with this, one item, on in the afternoon at 2:00 on May 20.
Well, let's be sure to request an hour, so that we have plenty of time to discuss, at least. Thank you very much.
Thank you for a very thoughtful conversation, and to all the people that testified.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your bringing this issue forward, and I think that we're all agreed to, that we need to achieve the goal of improving access to justice, we just got some kinks to work out.
Thank you.
So this matter is continued until the 20th, and we are adjourned.